Good morning, good afternoon, excuse me. We're calling the Board of Meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM. It is Tuesday, November 12th. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would like to ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
And if you would please recite with us the Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities, provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you very much. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from our official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting that will be considered as closed session by statute. We begin today with some special recognitions. We're starting with a recognition by Dr. Adami.
Can I push the poll?
Yes, you may, sir.
You know, it is always a pleasure to see Delmar College take a proactive stance in the health of the community. For the past 11 years, Delmar College has stepped up to the plate repeatedly, helping to organize one of the largest community citywide health fair in the community, in the county. So with this, you know, we'd like to recognize LULAC Council One is the oldest council in the United States. LULAC Council One is part of the largest Hispanic civil rights organization in the United States. Part of our mission is equal education, housing opportunities, political attainment, and healthcare. So keeping in line with our mission statement, Delmar has repeatedly looked to guidance through our organization and organizations like ours. So it is with great pleasure that I would like to present the LULAC Council One Presidential Award to Ms. Jennifer Sherman and Team Delmar.[224.31][224.31](Laughter)
And it states, "Presented to Jennifer Sherman, Interim Dean of Business, Health Sciences and Professional Education, and Team Delmar, Co-Organizer of the Citywide Health Fair. For your exemplary leadership and vision, you and your team have truly exemplified the tenets of LULAC. LULAC Council Number One will always be grateful for your dedication and hard work. The legacy you and your team helped create will live on forever."
Thank you so much.[268.14][268.14](Applause) Thank you. So I do want to thank the council for their recognition of this, but I really want to emphasize that it was a team effort. Some of the chairs that came with me today and members from the different health sciences, our EMT program, tons of student volunteers, it really was a team effort. So I want to take all the credit, want to make sure that I give credit where it's due. Thank you for that recognition. Thank you. And now our college relations staff has earned several awards, and Jay is going to let us hear all about it.
Good afternoon. College Relations has been involved with the National Council of Marketing and Public Relations for as long as I've worked for the college, and that's a couple decades now. But it is one of our professional organizations, and it ties together community and technical college public relations professionals in our district, six states, ranging from Texas, New Mexico, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Colorado, and Wyoming. At the recent District Four Conference, we won eight medallion awards for some of our work that we've done in marketing promotions for the college, and just wanted to go ahead and recognize the hard work of the great team that I work with behind me here, and just tell you, talk to you a little bit about those awards. In the bronze category, we won for note cards and invitations for the Delmar Day at the Capitol, that many of you might remember recently. In silver, we won for our social media, for our Twitter feed that Jason Houlihan heads up for us. In the wildcard category, our coloring book that we've been making great use of (laughing) for school kids around the area. So it's a lot, it's a wide range of products that we put out. For communications success story or community relations campaign, we won the silver award for, again, for Delmar Day at the Capitol, for the entire campaign. That was the office-wide effort put forward on that one. And excellence in writing, we, Mike put together an article about the NGLA program, the Leadership Academy that we have here at the college, won a silver award for the college for that effort. In the gold category, of course, the highest one they have, we won for our viewbook, the main promotional piece that the Student Enrollment Center does, that they use when they go out on the road recruiting. Monica was the lead designer on that, but it's, again, it's a team effort from the writing and for everything else that goes into that. For our video short series, for the Upskill Coastal Bend website that we've been working on with Dan Corris and his team. And television video advertisement, single or seers, It Takes a Viking, which we've worked with through our ad agency of record. But again, it's a lot of, a lot of sweat and hard work going in it by College Relations and the entire team. And I'd just like to go ahead and recognize everybody on our team for this year's work, and onward and upward.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. You represent the college well, and we're so glad that your peers recognize that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three staff reports that we're going to start with today. First is an e-learning update. Dr. Eskamia, do you want to intro anything?
Well, just that we're bringing forth the information that's been requested by the board. At any time, time we're talking about virtually any aspect, virtually no pun intended, any aspect of our curriculum, we run across the topic of e-learning here at Delmar College. And as requested, we're bringing forth some data and our leader in the field of e-learning, and that's what we're going to talk about. So Dr. Lewis, would you take it from there?
Thank you so much. So we want to give you a brief overview of where we've been, what we're doing now, and where we're going with e-learning at Delmar College. So with me is Cody Gregg. You've seen Cody before, he's our Dean of Learning Resources. And Janet Camps, Janet, you want to stand up? Thank you. Janet's our Director of E-Learning. So to give you just some vocabulary, so we all know that we're talking about the same thing. So e-learning means the same thing as distance education, which means the same thing as distance learning. Those terms are used interchangeably, it's not a problem. How students learn, what we call modalities, we do face-to-face, and we abbreviate that as F2F, and that means that it's up to 49% online, okay? It could be, it could be zero, it could be 49%, and still be face-to-face. A hybrid, 50 to 85% online, and fully online is more than 85% of the class is taught online. So just to give you some ideas of the different language that we're using there. Give you a little history here, in 1984, e-learning began at Delmar College, and you'll love this, you remember the old VHS tapes, right? So it was interactive video conferencing, which never worked, and you always had the sites at distant places, and you couldn't hear each other, couldn't see each other, but it was, you know, you were trying to make it work. And then started moving into the first online course, 1998, at Delmar. Right now, or rather, last fall, we had 136 faculty members who are teaching e-learning classes. We have eight degrees and certificates that are offered fully online right now, and I'll talk more about that in just a second. And we have three full-time staff in the e-learning department, and of course, our good friends in IT help us out every chance that they can. So to give you an idea of how many students we're talking about here, all the blue people here are taking face-to-face classes, okay? So that's almost 60% of our students are taking face-to-face classes. About 24% are taking both. They're taking some that are face-to-face and some that are online. They might be taking a hybrid class. And then the ones that are in the gold at the bottom, only 17% of our total, and that's about 2,000 students, are taking classes solely online, okay? So it gives you a bit of an idea there. So almost 7,000 face-to-face, about 2,800 are doing both, and then about 2,000 are doing strictly online. Yes, sir?
Remind us about the definition, or tell us the definition of hybrid, please.
Okay. Hybrid means that it is, let me see if I can back up.
It's okay, just tell us.
So hybrid, hybrid means that it is between 40, help me out Cody, because I knew that, 50 to 85%.
Up to 50%.
Yes.
So typically, the hybrid class will have a face-to-face component, where the students meet face-to-face part of the time, up to 50% of the time, and 50% of the instruction is online.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this next slide takes that data that you looked at in the last slide. That last slide was kind of a 30,000-foot view for you, the big, large overview. And this breaks that data down and gives you a little bit more detail. So you'll see on the right-hand side, that's the same data that you saw on the last slide, the 59%, 24%, and 17%. So that's all of our students, that's the picture of all of our students. However, if we break those into groups of dual students and non-dual students, you can see that the proportions of online learners are different.
Dual credit.
Dual credit. So those are dual-credit students, yes. So you can see there by the numbers in dual-credit, that there are 42% of those who are taking e-learning classes or online classes. So you can see there that online has been a big strategy for the college in fulfilling the needs of the dual-credit population for Delmar College.
Ready?
This slide is a little bit of a primer, just to make sure that we all know that we're talking about the same terms, when we're talking about unduplicated enrollment and duplicated course enrollment, because those terms can be confusing at times. When we look at the next slide, we will be looking at duplicated enrollment. And in a nutshell, what that means is that every student can count more than one time in those numbers that we'll look at. So if you look at that left-hand portion of the slide, let's say we have three students, and Dr. Eskamia is student number one, he's taking one course in the fall, one in the spring, and one in the summer. So in that unduplicated course enrollment count, he'll count three times. Dr. Lewis is student number two, she's taking two courses, two courses, and two courses. So she'll count six times in that duplicated course enrollment. And Dr. Silva, he visits us only in the summer from the University of Texas, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Texas A&amp;M.
Kingsville.
From Texas A&amp;M, and he only takes one course.
The Havelina and an Aggie, you can't, you can't hurt anybody's feelings more than that.[830.44][830.44](Laughter) Alex, Rita, we'll talk afterwards, man, just take it easy.
So Dr. Silva counts one time in that duplicated course enrollment. So you can see there, in 2017, 2018, which is the last, the last year that we have the full certified enrollment data available for, we had a total of 15,540 individual, unique students. And together, those students combined for a duplicated course enrollment of 70, just over 71,000. So I just want to make sure that when we, when we talk about that 71,000 number, everybody knows that students count more than one time in that number.
Regents, one of the numbers, when Cody and I were talking about this presentation, we're talking about there's just production, we're talking about volume here. We're not trying to distort anything, it's just we're talking about capacity and number of people enrolling in this, in this aspect of our curriculum. So please understand that we've gone through these types of numbers before, and again, those are, these are important data that just exemplify our volume.
So this slide shows you over time how that duplicated course enrollment has changed with relation to non-e-learning students, e-learning students, non-dual e-learning students and dual e-learning students. So I scaled these to 100% so that you could see more easily the change in the dual, I'm sorry, in the e-learning. You can see that the yellow represents the dual-credit e-learning, you can see that the gray represents the non-dual-credit e-learning. In 2013, 14, those two taken together were 15% of the total. When you get over to the right-hand side, 2017, 2018, it's about 25% of the total. So over five years, it has grown from 15% to 25% of total in terms of our, of our total One thing that's not in your slides that I would like to point out about those numbers is that in that last year, in 2017, 2018, taking you back to the definitions that Dr. Lewis gave you for hybrid, 49% of the growth in e-learning was in hybrid courses in that 2017, 2018 year. And what that means is those courses, as I said, have a face-to-face component, and they have an online component. So those courses are still using our facilities, they're still meeting on campus for half of their instructional time, while the other half of their instructional time takes place online. Okay, so now moving on to, I'm sorry, go back one slide.
Oh, no, 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 see, now you get something. Thank you.
All right, so another, taking a look at it through a different lens, and that is through contact hours, you can see that it's the same type of growth, the same type of growth pattern. The percentages are a little bit different when you get to 2017, 2018. The e-learning accounts for about 20% of the total. Okay, next one.
And what we see here are the top online classes by enrollment, so obviously, and this does include dual-credit, so the governments, the things that dual-credit students are very much signing up for, math, psychology, English, economics, English 1302, both histories, the speech, and the sociology. So you can see the middle column there, what the actual count is on the enrollment, and then the number of sections on the far right. This slide, it looks a little bit busy, but just look at the general idea of it, it is course success, and we define that as the grade of an A, a B, or a C. You'll be able to see the different color coatings at the bottom there, whether it's dual-credit face-to-face, dual-credit e-learning, non-dual-credit face-to-face, and non-dual-credit e-learning. So you can see the different, the different levels there. What strikes me the most obvious here is that there's very little difference over this four- or five-year period. It's staying pretty much the same all the way across. You see a little bit more on the non-dual-credit e-learning, a little bit more success on that, but for the most part, those numbers are all staying the same. We do have some online degrees that are completely 100% online, and one of those is that Associate of Arts in Business Administration, our Associate of Arts in Criminal Justice, our Associate of Arts in English. If you're doing an AAT, which is an Associate of Arts in Teaching, grades eight through 12, and early childhood through grade 12 in English, those are online. And then our Liberal Arts degree is completely online, so you can get your degree that way. We do have some certificates of achievement there, the Accounting Specialist, Human Resources, which is one of our newer ones, and then Criminal Justice Field of Studies certificate. And then to show you that, and this is sort of intentionally underwhelming, okay? Because what this means is that of all of our Associate of Arts in Liberal Arts graduates in fall of 2018, we had one who earned their degree completely online. In business, we had three, in criminal justice, we had zero, and then their certificate in human resources, we had one that earned them completely online. So this is not something that is, is taking over our operation, where everybody's flocking to taking all of their degree requirements online.
While you're saying that, can I ask you, are there any predictions or feelings about how much?
Sorry. How much it'll grow? Are we ever going to get to the point where it'll be 50/50 classroom as opposed to online learning or e-learning?
Personally, I don't think so. I think our population still likes the face-to-face, even though they have challenges as far as working through time, and parenting, and working, and most of, most of our students still like the classroom experience, being face-to-face with other classmates and faculty members.
Yeah, and that's been, I mean, it's the very nature of the community college student on average. If you just look at the bell curve and you put our students in there as a profile, it's not going to change. You're not going to get to that percentage. They want to take classes here. Even those taking purely online classes, or exclusively online classes, in other words, non-hybrid classes, they come here to take them. And they've been doing that forever, and they come to our libraries, and they use our labs, and they're here engaging us, and they walk down the hall, and they talk to the professors, and they engage them that way. And so it's just a very different approach. And, and I'll just throw this in there, I talked to two people who are online students right now, two very different profiles. One is a retired officer of the Coast Guard, who's going back and looking for another degree, who's taking purely online classes and seeking that degree almost done, and talked about the availability of it, and the convenience and everything else, loves it, you know, doesn't want to step on campus and so forth, doesn't need to. Another one's a 15-year-old who lives in my house.[1318.54][1318.54](Laughter) And, and he's taking, and he's taking two courses. And I'll tell you what, I'm learning a lot by watching this every day. I can't access our personal computer at home anymore, I gave up on that, I'm just going to have to buy another one, whatever. But the point with that is, though, I'm watching the rigor, I'm watching the amount of work that it takes, because if you don't have access to that face-to-face opportunity, now I could bring him over here and we can, you know, meet his professors and so forth, but that's not been the case yet. It is an extremely different experience, okay? It's very demanding. It is hugely demanding, because everything you have to communicate has to be in the written form. And if your writing is not what it needs to be, your grade will show it. And so I'm watching this as a dad, and, you know, I'm talking to my buddy down the street from us, our kids go to school together, and I'm hearing these stories out there. It is, it's an amazing thing to watch. I, I think I took, I did take a hybrid, one hybrid course in graduate school, that was it. That's all I needed to take. I regret that I didn't have that experience. And what I've been saying before is the opportunity for our students, especially those who are going to transfer, obviously for the convenience factor and everything else, those are, you know, we want that. But for our students who are going to transfer to whatever university, taking that class and the level of support that we have is greater than I believe anything they're going to have at any university out there. So the opportunity to take that while you have our support services here is imperative. And I think it's, it's, I would, I would encourage everybody to take at least one online class before they finish here at Delmar College.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout-out to our Office of Institutional Research for their help, particularly on this slide. Each of those columns that you see represents about two days of work by an individual analyst. It is a very manual, intensive process to be able to get these numbers. So I do want to give a shout-out to them, and a thank you to them for their help in generating that. Okay, and to close up, just wanted to talk a little bit about currently what we're doing in e-learning. We're working on quality assurance, we are working on the e-learning faculty handbook, which is in draft form, and going through the various councils for feedback and review at this point in time. That includes course design review. We're also working on faculty training. To date, workshops and consultations, in 2018, 2019, the e-learning office has provided 1,011 hours of workshops and consultations. Verification of student identity is a federal requirement. Basically, what that means is that we have to assure that the student who completes the work and takes the tests in our online courses is the student who signed up for those courses. So we do that through various means, students log in with a secure username and password, but there are also other electronic systems. We're working on making sure that we choose the appropriate one and the right one for Delmar College. In early November, November 1st, we had our first e-learning symposium, which was about a half-day of intensive training and speakers on e-learning. We had 28 faculty attendees, and that was part of our celebration of National Distance Learning Week. And we continue to focus on best practices in online classes and hybrid courses. We have an ad hoc committee that has just been formed that is looking at making sure that we study best practices, incorporate those into our handbook as we move forward.
Be happy to answer any questions or concerns you have.
I have several questions. Oh, go ahead.
I just have one back on the course success slide. I just wondered if you had any comments or thoughts about, it looks like the dual-credit students actually are more successful than our non-dual-credit students, and your thoughts about that?
Sure. Most of the time, our dual-credit students, if they're doing an online class, it is dedicated class time at the high school. So it is figured into their class day, they go to a lab, they have a proctor there, or someone who can make sure that they can get logged on, and so it is a regimented class for them. For other students, it's not, and they just fit it in when they can.
Okay. And then the, also on the ones that are face-to-face are more successful also in dual-credit?
Right.
Same sort of situation?
Same thing. They have, they have support in the high school, and it is a fixed time of their day in their schedule.
I have some questions. On this same slide, 67% get C or better, does that mean 33% get D or failure?
It would be a D, an F, or a W, yes. So, or they've withdrawn, so a D and F, or they've withdrawn from the class.
That seems pretty bad.
Unfortunately, I think that that is kind of the nature of an online class. Sometimes students go into it thinking it's going to be easier, because they don't have to go anywhere, they don't have to go to class, and they learn very quickly that if they don't stay up with what they're doing, and they don't stay engaged in the class on their own, then they're not going to be successful. And we've had students who thought, who come and tell us, "I thought it was going to be a lot easier on, online. I thought, you know, I'd rather take algebra online because I'm not very good at math." And you just, you know, kind of cringe and say, "Oh, honey, you really need to be with people who can help you immediately."
Oh, my.
So that, that is, you're right, it's about a third who are not successful for those reasons. They don't understand that it takes probably sometimes twice as much effort for an online class, because there's not anyone standing there saying, "Okay, come on now, this is due."
Okay, I understand that. On the slide that had four columns, it took two days each to prepare each column, will that be addressed in our new software?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the great effort that is given is, it speaks to a manual process that we have to overcome with our new ERP and our reporting structures and so forth, so absolutely.
My final question is possibly a little more complex. If we'll go back to the numbers, I'm seeing that we've got 11,856 students. I think I'm missing two components here. I've got students not attending classes on campus as 2016, but I think I'm missing, missing the hybrid portion of that.
Those are incorporated in the e-learning numbers, because it is included as a modality. So in those e-learning numbers that are all in gold, those could be hybrid students. Now, those numbers are very small, the numbers of hybrid students are very small.
Okay, that's helpful. How about the dual-credit students that aren't coming to campus? How could I find that number?
The dual-credit students who are not coming to campus.
If they're taught at a high school?
On the next slide, e-learning, where it gives the overview of all dual-credit and non-dual-credit. non-dual-credit. That forty-two percent of e-learning students. Of dual-credit e-learning students. Those would be taking online courses. Now, there are some hybrid, there are some dual-credit students taking hybrid, but as I said before, those numbers are very, very small.
Yep. So it's going to be about sixty-some percent that would be on campus then? Am I reading that correctly?
Of the dual-credit students?
Yes.
The thirty-nine plus the nineteen, yes.
Okay, so. So it looks like we've got eleven thousand eight hundred in total, two thousand that aren't attending, and then, I'm not sure what that number's going to be, about one thousand. So we've got about eighty-eight hundred and forty students attending classes on campus. Would that be correct?
Well, this is a particular, this is a, this is a fall eighteen head count. Now, this is a, yeah, this, go ahead.
This is an unduplicated number for fall 2018, so it doesn't duplicate the enrollments. Sorry, but Dr. Eskemia.
Can't really extract like that from these numbers. In the dual-credit blue column, of that thirty-nine percent is not breaking out campus to non-campus. Some dual-credit classes are taught face-to-face on campus.
Right.
That, this number does not break out from what you're asking.
Okay. And my goal is to see how many students we have on campus, because I'm looking at 2009. We had twelve thousand sixty-nine students. Not many of those were dual-credit. So we had approximately twelve thousand coming to campus. Now it looks like we've got maybe nine thousand. So we've had a substantial decrease in that ten-year period of on-campus students. I just want to make sure my calculations are reasonable.
We can go back and verify those numbers.
If you would, because I have a great interest in that.
Understand.
Okay.
In rough numbers, the twenty-four hundred dual-credit students, four hundred of those are on campus in early college program here, about four hundred are on campus at the Branch Academy on the West Campus. So those are quick numbers that tell you, yes, they're dual-credit students, but they are on campus. And then of the rest of, and some of those students may be taking online, some of them are taking face-to-face dual-credit. And so the balance would be at a high school, either face-to-face or e-learning. Might be another way to back into that dual-credit number.
And those should reconcile. You're right.
Right. So eight hundred students out of that dual-credit number are on campus. Everything else is either e-learning or at a high school campus.
The other thing I would add is this, these are fall eighteen numbers, nineteen numbers are different. There are more, they're different. We have yet to get that officially registered, so this is a slightly, a good percentage lighter in terms of head count than this fall.
And Mr. Bennett, the one thing that I would add is something that Dr. Eskemia had noted earlier, is that we do see e-learning students in our libraries, in our labs, taking, taking their courses online on our computers on campus as well. So they are making some use of student, of campus facilities.
And I understand that. I'm trying to look at classroom utilization, and that would be a zero. Libraries, we all like libraries, or I certainly do.
I'm very happy to hear that.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for this report. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate the time it took to put it together. Thank you. Dr. Lewis is going to give us an update on SAC COC and our QEP. Dr. Eskemia, do you have anything?
No, just as, again, this is another report that we promised to bring forward. And what's important here is that we engage in conversation and really spend a little time taking in the update. This is all evidence of supporting our reaffirmation process, and the minutes of this particular meeting will be used to support the communication from administration to the Board of Regents. So, thank you.
So before I get started, I want to introduce some folks who make my life so much easier. Dr. Lucy James, you all know Lucy, and Dr. Sidney Zombi, who are both the major players in leading our reaffirmation efforts. I don't even know what to say. Y'all are so wonderful. And Dr. Christina Wilson, who's actually doing a SAC site visit in another state. She's serving as a reviewer in another state, or she would be here also. Okay, so you've seen this slide before, but I think it helps us get into context on where we are. Remember that we're the class of 2021, but our clients, our compliance report is due on March second. That is a hundred and eleven days from today. Okay? Remember when I first did this? It was that seven hundred and fifty-six days from today. And there are times I wish we could kind of go back then. But let me tell you a little bit about some other dates that we've got coming up. Our written QEP is due on September the eighth. We'll have our reaffirmation team visiting the last week in October, the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, and you'll be hearing much more about that later on. If we have a response to our site visit, that'll be due in April of 2021. It goes to the SAC's board on June of 2021, and then they make the status announcement in December of 2021. So a little over a year from now, about thirteen months, everything will be official. Okay, so this pretty much tells where we are in our standards. So you know that if I'm doing this, there's going to be a dog in it, right? And I have to apologize because evidently I was on a field trip the day we covered arithmetic in elementary school, because in the report that got sent out, that I sent to Delia when she posted, I had the wrong numbers on here. I'm still mastering the art of adding. So what you have in front of you and what you have on this slide is correct. There are seventy-five standards. And where we are right now is we have nineteen of those seventy-five that are completely finalized. Now, that sounds like a little deal. It's not. It's a big deal. It means that the narrative has gone through the team, it's gone through the editing team, it has gone through Dr. James and Dr. Zombi, and all of their evidence is attached and all of their evidence is perfect. Okay? Those are ready to go. We could send those to Atlanta today, and it would be great. So the ones that are in editing team review right now are six, which means that there's still a little bit of massaging that needs to be done, but for the most part, they're almost finalized. Not surprisingly, the majority of the work is here in progress, which means that the team's working on it. They're gathering their data, they're writing their narratives. Remember when we talk about gathering their data and gathering their evidence? That may mean a variety of things. Simply, it means, is there a policy in the policy manual that you can attach to? But it also may mean that you've got to go back and hand look through files of paper that you then scan and upload as your evidence. Okay? So in-progress is a good thing. It means that it's being worked on, and we're moving toward editing team review and then moving toward final. And then the last one that's not started, there's only one, and not surprisingly, it's the QEP. We're still shaping that. And remember that this standard does not have to be submitted March second. We can send in something if we want to get a response to it, but we don't have to send that in until after the summer. Okay? So that's the only one that has not been started yet. So we're in really good shape. We're about where we should be. Okay? So remember that reaffirmation has two parts. It has your compliance certification part and it's got your QEP or your Quality Enhancement Plan. Key things to remember there, that it is part of the reaffirmation. If your QEP is not accepted, you do not get reaffirmed. This results in a standalone document. It is not the certification document. It is a different document entirely. And it focuses on student success, an issue that faces the entire institution. This is a new approach that SACs is taking with the QEP. Last time, it was pick a smaller program that you can make great influence in. So a lot of people would choose speaking confidence or math confidence or...
Critical thinking.
Critical thinking, something like that. But we're focusing on student success, and I'll talk about that in just a second. This will be reviewed by the onsite committee when they come in October of 2020.
Our last one was developmental math.
Yes. So the core elements of the QEP approval is that it has to be part of your comprehensive planning and evaluation process. That's our strategic plan. So yay us, we're ahead of the game on that. We focused on student success. We focused on what it's going to take, how we're going to measure that is what we're working on right now. It has to have broad-based support and impact. Well, I can't think of anything that is more important than the topic that we have chosen, which is advising. We have to have the ability to implement and assess this plan. And when we were here last month about this time, we got to do a great announcement about an almost three-million-dollar grant that we got called Project Sinda that focuses on advising. And so in some ways, it's like everything has come together to be very successful for this. So who's working on QEP? Dr. Dale Anderson, he was the QEP director, but stepped into the position of Chair of Communication, Languages and Reading, but he is still very involved in QEP leadership. And we chose Christine Gottamoller. She's the Assistant Professor of Political Science. She was appointed as the new QEP director in August and is doing a great job. And then, of course, Letitia Wilson, appointed as the Director of Advising Initiatives and is creating a manual of standardized advising practices and procedures, and she's very much taking a lead on Project Sinda. So we're talking about how do we advise? How do we train our faculty to be good and better advisors? And how do we make all of this happen? Okay, so what's next? Well, we're going to finish writing that compliance report, and we'll get that thing submitted before the end of February. We'll be finishing, designing the QEP outcome goals. We're going to be finishing structuring the implementation plan and the assessment structure. And that is that. What questions may I answer for you?
Do we have questions for Dr. Lewis? Thank you. Thank you very much for the update.
I just wanted to add, compared to the last, the last one ten years ago, are we about the same or a little bit ahead of schedule on this?
I wasn't here for that, so I would have to defer that question.
We were, Lenora, I'd say we're exactly where we were last time, give or take a few items. Again, it depends on the items. A number of items is one thing, the weightedness, the weighted effect of each one. You know, there are big items and then there are small items, and then so I think we're very comparably positioned.
Very much the same. Our report was due in March, just like it is at this time, so it's a very similar calendar.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to have an update on our student housing. Dr. Silva.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Regents. With me today is John Striebo. John has lots of experience in a public-private partnership, and he's going to have the last half of this presentation. The first half of the presentation, I'm going to review a recent survey that we did with our students and also follow up from a question we had when we did our last presentation. So with that, we'll get started here. We conducted a student survey back in last month between October seventh and the twenty-eighth. I'll be very honest with you. I would be happy with between five and seven hundred responses. We actually got one thousand one hundred and sixty-three responses. There could be some duplications, but I'm going to explain that in a while, based on the open-ended one. There's probably very few of any duplications on this. The survey was administered online, some classrooms, student activities, had some events to encourage participation, and this was actually sent to all students also via email. Again, Institutional Research Office, we worked that office really hard. I want to thank them for their hard work in putting this together. College Relations always does a wonderful job in getting the word out. And our Campus Life Office with Beverly Cage did a wonderful job in getting some excitement out there and getting students to answer this survey. So based on the survey, we asked them these questions. Would you like Delmar College to provide on-campus dorms and student housing in the future? As you can tell, about eighty-five percent of the students resoundingly said yes, that they would like to see an on-campus dorm or student housing. Then we asked them if they, we had housing, would they be interested? So seventy percent said yes, a total of eight hundred and twenty students said yes to the answer of, to the question whether they would be interested in housing at Delmar College. Then we asked, what kind of housing would benefit you and your needs most? And it would be dorms, multifamily, or both, and a majority of students picked both with this question. And then we asked them, if they lived on campus, would it help them stay more engaged and active in student events? This is linked into student success. We all know by research, if we get a student engaged, they're more apt to finish with us. And with this question, about eighty-six percent of students said yes, they would get more engaged. And then we asked them, would you take more classes? And of course, seventy-three point four percent of our students said yes to that. The last question we asked was an open-ended questions, and I have, we had over eight hundred comments. Got twenty-nine pages worth of valuable data. And if you would like to see this, I really enjoyed, did a little analysis on it, a qualitative analysis on it, found some common themes. But if you want to see this for yourself, I know Ms. Delia has that, we can make that available to you if you'd like to see all twenty-nine pages. But again, just in my, in my amateur analysis on it, there's two common themes. For the pros, it was, students, of course, said that they would take more hours, they're much in favor, they're much in favor of it, they would save money, and they would increase their engagements. The ones that had concerns, there are concerns with, they're either non-traditional students, there's not a fit for them unless it's a multifamily housing. And then again, students were concerned that their tuition would increase and other services would kind of decrease. So those are just samples of what we got. I included some samples of both on here as well. I didn't want to just stress one or the other, but overwhelmingly, they were positive. The positive ones, they were, again, taking more classes, students saying that they drive forty minutes, sixty minutes, you know, an hour away from campus to get here, and so being on campus would help them with gas and, of course, be able to help them take care of tutoring and other activities they could have taken advantage of if they were on campus.
A lot of those, a lot of those twenty minutes, forty minutes, sixty minutes, that's one way. They got to go home.
Correct.
That's the whole point.
Absolutely. That's a wonderful point.
You know, you're spending a couple hours, an hour, two hours a day on the road.
On the road with gas. And then, and those are students who, again, if you just put yourself in their shoes, they're actually anxious to get home. So usually they can't stay for tutoring or other kind of services. They usually come in, take classes, and then head back home right afterwards.
Was any mention made concerning affordability?
Yes. Yes. As a matter of fact, they're talking about, and we're talking about this regarding, when we move forward, this, again, we're peeling a layer of the onions and being very methodical in this process of the student housing part of it. But once we know more of what we're going to do and if we're going to do this, I think we need to get the pricing out there and seeing, does that make them more apt to come in housing or not to come if we're priced out of what they can afford? So there are some, and so these are some of the positive comments. And again, to the ones that had concerns, again, they're just concerned about their tuition, property tax, cost of tuition rising again, and so you can read some of those comments as well. But again, it's a really interesting reading here and so...
Rito, you said that twice. Are they concerned that the tuition will go up if we provide housing?
Yes. Or that some services would go, would go down.
Yep.
Only a small percentage would actually be using the housing, so why would we penalize the rest of them?
So there's no, there's no analysis at this point to balance that out. What the students are speculating, that immediately any charge is going to impact, impact their, you know, the cost of being a student here and/or somebody else's need to stay on campus would affect their tuition as well. So there's a lot of speculation here. As we move into this, we're going to be looking at, let me just kind of say a couple of things here. We're going to be looking at a model that is a multifamily, public-private partnership, and we've asked Mr. Striebo to talk about that. It's a very different business model than if we were to put our own funds into a traditional dorm scenario. And that would have different impacts on students. The thing is, this is all individual speculation, people just thinking things out. Nobody's talking about adding, charging students A, B, and C to support subsidized building a student D. So just kind of take it for what it is right now. It's qualitative data, it's un-aggregated, it remains disaggregated and not coalesced or coded, so we just got to take it for what we see there. But we've got to understand that that is a real concern, that it has to be clarified for the students as well.
Did we ask the respondents what their current living situation? Did we ask the respondents what their current living situation is?
We did not, no.
So we don't know whether they're paying for their own rent right now or if they're living at home?
We did not, but part in, something in here said, yes, I'm paying an apartment there and it's kind of expensive. And we'll talk to the very end, some of the, as we move forward, we want to do a market analysis of what's in the area.
Are these questions exactly as they were asked?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I do wonder what some people think about, what does it mean, will Delmar provide? And that could have approached people negatively or positively.
Sure.
Somebody who didn't want it said, no, I don't want to give them away housing.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
And we just, there'll be another level to these, to the survey as we get closer to what we know might be a possibility, and we'll give more facts in there. So it could be where they make a decision where it's not something that they're priced into, maybe that they won't, but maybe they'll find out such affordable price that maybe they can.
I'm even thinking about those that would not use the housing. If they knew it was not going to be subsidized, they may be more in favor of it. So I don't know how it would impact.
Lots of, lots of very, lots of nuances and more scientific, scientifically-focused questions would be, would be next steps. This was just to kind of put something out there to get, to see what kind of response we would get. Again, we, it was way beyond the number I even expected. I thought we'd get a few hundred, that'd be great. But to have 1,100 responses was some, taught us something. So we would, we will get more scientific as we move ahead.
The next two slides would look familiar to you. My last presentation, we presented this, I think Regent Rivas, it was you who asked if we could categorize those ones that are large colleges like we are categorized by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So the highlighted ones are what we are grouped with in the coordinating board as a large college. And also just another reminder that of what's out there, again, when I was talking to Mr. Strieboz at lunch today, we're both still kind of amazed that 29 out of 50 sister colleges have some kind of housing. And this is just another reminder of what those colleges are and how much that they And now we have the different kind of funding options, and this will all turn over to Mr. Strieboz to discuss about the private-public partnership that he has very successfully been a part of.
So this is not intended to get any specific direction on one way or another, it's just general background. Then in San Antonio, Texas, Alamo County College District, we've used a public-private partnership for Tobin Lofts at San Antonio College. And when you talk about options for construction, and this isn't just about student housing, this could be for any project, you have choices between your taxes, you have, which have impact, and the different impacts on the operating budget. You have public-private partnership, you have revenue bonds, maintenance tax notes, general obligation bonds. You can also have grants and other opportunities for funding for construction. And we'll kind of focus this now then on student housing.
It's right here, John. No, that one's all right.
So at San Antonio College Tobin Lofts, we had a four-acre parking lot that really was a dirt parking lot. We were able to convert that into a $30 million student housing complex. It has 552 beds in it, it has retail space in it, it has a restaurant in it, it has space that the university has been using. And the cost of that was really just our due diligence to show that the land had value, having to appraise certain economic and appraisals for it. We used a private developer to invest all the rest of the funds. The developer has all of the risk for this particular project. And it's helped revitalize that neighborhood. We've had other developers come in now, build other housing. If you were to compare it from what it was to what it is today, it literally also is urban renewal in addition to providing student housing. That opens up some other avenues that you can then approach the city or the county and ask if they have any wish to participate in this, either through funding or through tax abatements, street improvements, a variety of other ways that can help alleviate some of the costs for these projects. The growth that it's made, the change that it's made, and in this particular case, these are more like student apartments, that it's open to students anywhere. So we have students from San Antonio College, but also from UTSA, from the KU and Institute of America. And so part of what happens, the way these operate, to getting them, the students actually sign a lease, and so they have to have creditworthiness and they have to have someone who will guarantee the lease. So there's financing challenges there about the students and them having the income to operate that. But they're doing well, they're at about 85% occupancy and working ways to improve that. And it kind of goes up and downs and goes in these different cycles, and those are some opportunities, we'll talk about this. How it's set up, and its organizational structure is partly set up by Texas law, that we have a public-private partnership. And as part of this, that San Antonio, Alamo County College District has set up a public facilities corporation, then we set up a limited liability corporation, and you see the different memberships on that. And so the Board of Trustees does govern what happens with overall public-private partnership. The overall overview of it, 552 beds, a variety of different configurations, one bedroom, two bedroom, four bedroom. We do have some of these units that also, we have faculty living them as well as, and we built a parking garage that goes with it because of space configurations and the faculty has, have children in there. And we've made some exceptions, we have students who can have pets, not just therapy animals, they pay a deposit and then they can have pets in there as well. It's in walking distance to a variety of different locations, the college in addition. It's one mile from the Pearl, we have bus routes, we have bicycle share routes. So we have a variety of ways that people can get anywhere, and this is a mile from downtown. It's in walking distance. So we start off, the fall of 2013, it was a lower occupancy, literally because we didn't know for sure if we'd make that date, but it opened up at 48%. It's risen up to 90%, it's hovering around about 85% occupancy now. The most popular units are one-bedroom, one-bath units, but we have a variety of different options, and y'all show the costing on these, and this does translate into the rates are. So these are in San Antonio. So you've got leasing rates at a top end of $1,000 a month for one-bedroom, one-bath, and they go down from there, down to $575 to $630 a month. These are four-bedroom, four-bath options, and they are furnished, and they do include a certain amount for utilities as well. We have free Wi-Fi throughout the entire facility, they have access to a fitness center, a swimming pool and a learning center. Target market, again, ends up being students. And part of what happens is, we have in-district, which is students who live in Bear County. Out-of-district, they pay out-of-district tuition outside Bear County. If they come and live in Tobin Lofts, now they pay in-district tuition. So they have definite advantages for doing that. We also have other colleges, St. Phillips College, Palo Alto College, Incarnate Word is right there, St. Mary's, UTSA, both downtown and out on 1604, Trinity University. We have international students and we've hosted students and faculty from international. So it is about trying to fill the beds and thinking of it, we use a third-party campus advantage for the overall day-to-day manage of the project. So there are, can be some impacts, and this is a legal impact in that we need a lawyer to basically manage it all the time, an accountant to do the accounting all the time. Third-party manage it, facility operations, there's security, there can be student life, residential assistance, tutors, there's a variety of different pieces that can impact your overall day-to-day operations to make it a success. Then you have the operating pieces, the utilities, the maintenance, insurance. Now, a lot of these can be pushed off into the public-private partnership where the private part is paying that. It's more about what you want on that and how much success you want on that. That if you want resident assistance there, typically what that means is they get to live there for free, but operating model means someone somehow paying that check to pay for the rent. So there's a variety of ways that can impact your operating budget, and it just depends on how you finally, decisions that you make on the actual operations. How does it impact enrollment? You've heard some of this, it will increase your enrollment. How much will it increase the enrollment enough to pay for itself? Those are a variety of questions. You know, if you build it, will they come? They will, but will enough of them come if you build it? All right. But the other key piece is, in general, you'll have an increase in contact hours. That's one of our core goals. You'll have sooner completion rates and higher completion rates. You have opportunities for certain minorities that you may not otherwise be serving, veterans' housing. There's ways to get homeless students in here, you can have international students. Summers are times when it's like, well, okay, we have lower enrollment, can you offer summer camps even for future students? Can you do foreign exchange with faculty or other students? So you have other ways to increase occupancy rates.
Accurate from here, John. Our next step, we want to do a market analysis of the housing in this area as well to see what the needs are around the east campus here, do a financial analysis for student housing. And again, this is a, like Dr. Skemia said, an ongoing research onto what we're doing. We're peeling back one layer of the onion at a time to see where we, if students want it and if it's a good fit for Delmar College. So Mr. Strieboz and I will take any questions you might have.
How many acres do you say you have there, John?
It was four acres.
Four acres?
Yes, sir.
On the leasing rates, why is it more expensive for a one-bedroom, one-bath than for the bigger apartments?
Is that per bed?
Those are per-bed rent rates. Those are per-bed rent rates. Yes, they rent per-bed.
I was thinking one-bedroom.
That last bullet point, leases by the bed.
Leases by the bed, it's by-the-bed rent rates.
You pay for privacy.
Yes.
The reason Regents, we're bringing this, this particular model of housing out there is because it presents a discussion opportunity. That's what we're looking at doing right now. We go back to 2011 or 12 when we bought the Tarleton property, back all the way with the old osteopathic hospital. And we took on that particular piece of property, which is about four acres, I think it's like 3.9 acres or so. With the idea of, well, certainly it was, it was an asset, it was, it was something that was relatively close and almost adjoining a piece of property that we have across the street. And it presented, it spurred the conversations about housing and what we could possibly do. Of course, this is one model. Again, this is a model that presents low risk on the front end. We do, you can tell that there are still some aspects where the college would have to make investments with monitoring, with RAs perhaps, and other types of counseling features and student activity features. You know, we have to be monitoring our students while we're there and engaging them, that's the whole point. And so this model is, is one that we wanted to bring a, a, a level of conversation to spur, spur on some thoughts. And then all the while knowing that, you know, we did talk about in our, in our questionnaire for, for our students, that there's a whole different model. And that is a residence hall or a dorm, a traditional dorm as well. We can bring that as well. This one we thought was, was the one that we probably had the, we've been having conversations about this for a very long time already. And so we wanted to work with our, our good friend and colleague, Mr. Strieboz, who is a professional engineer and who does lots and lots of facilities work for our neighbors up the, up I-37, to discuss this. If you will recall, Mr. Strieboz had made this presentation a few years ago at a trustees and Regents institute. So this is very similar. So some of y'all have already seen this particular presentation in I think a different, in a different iteration. I think y'all were just getting things going. So I want to thank you for joining us today to present this. Again, two, two different models. Obviously, we focused on this public-private partnership. All sorts of bells and whistles on this thing. Alamo has gone above and beyond. Are we San Antonio? No, we're not San Antonio. We recognize that. But we've got to, it's here for your consideration, and questions and comments, please.
I'm getting a lot of concern from my constituents. And I'm okay with the public-private partnership as long as we're not subsidizing the thing. And the major concern I'm getting is not about this, but it's about capital expenditures for our own dorms and the resulting or the implication that we're going to have to subsidize those. I think most of the people I'm talking to are saying, if we, if it's viable, we should do a public-private partnership that we don't subsidize. And that's what this is more or less looking like.
Was this the first dorm experience for San Antonio College or is this the latest?
Yes, it's the first and it's the only one that we have.
Okay.
These are our only student housing.
So you had to start that whole, that whole conversation from scratch. That process, best practices learning, not just about the facility itself, but how they integrated the marketing and, and the policies, everything related to student housing, how that whole process, because that'll take as much discussion for you all to integrate that into our practices as, as potentially the facility itself. I share some of the same concerns as Regent Bennett, making sure that we are looking at this. I would think first, from a public-private partnership standpoint, we obviously have some land and potentially even a building that could be, a portion of a building that could be renovated. So that would be our contribution to, to the opportunity and we'd have to look at, at a public-private partnership. I don't know how we could, could subsidize that, but there may be some opportunities there, the other things that we could bring to the table. And the third comment that I have is related to the market study. While I appreciate the general interest of students, asking would-you kinds of questions in a survey is problematic to bet the farm on.
Oh, sure.
So we have, so that real market analysis, I think, would be very, very critical. And the crystal ball is always the crystal ball, but trying to figure out what exactly our market price point would be that would move students into it without being really undercutting the market out there. So I think there's a balance there and understanding what our true market potential would be would be very, very important to me.
Can you get to the last slide, please?
Yes.
Those are prompts about next steps. And again, Chairwoman Scott, that's exactly right. This was just a basic, put it out there kind of thing, request, a basic questionnaire just to get basic feedback. What that really does is affirms the conversations we've been having and that existed long before I got here. It is a repetitive refrain from the students that talks about the level of engagement and what housing does. And I think the biggest nugget out of all of those, and I went through every one of those comments, was I will take more classes. I will be able to take one more class, more classes. That is a very powerful statement that they've been saying forever. And that's what this, that's what this does. It addresses that opportunity for them. It gives them a place to stay. It gives, it shrinks, it shrinks their economics. It makes more efficient their economics. And so that, those are the great things. So next steps, you know, a market analysis is going to be done probably by the companies that we would talk about. We're not going to be the market analyst people. We're not going to become the experts in that area by any means. We would go out and we would talk to people, because they would come in, John, unless I'm missing something here, those companies would come in and do the analysis themselves and tell you whether they're interested in talking to us or not.
Right, exactly. And, you know, part of our further development, we've looked at other opportunities, the first question is, well, what's the market? And so they're national companies and this is what they do. They go out and they survey the entire market and they look at what's the current availability of housing, student-type housing, and what is the current rent rates? And then they also do a detailed breakdown on your college, and they break it down to what, basically it's an availability and demand type study, and what's available, what's the pricing that's out there and what's the demand, but what will the price pay? And we're probably looking at some kind of gap and how do you close that gap?
Yep. And then they would take a look at our, our total assets and availability, whether it's open land or an available building or something like that, or space anywhere. They're going to, they're going to tell us their opinion and what they're willing, what level of investment they're willing to make with us. So those would be next steps. These next steps right here will really be coming from, from the experts, is my point with these three bullets.
Other comments, questions? I hope we could rely on the expertise of Dr. Sherwood, and I know she's got a little bit of experience in this field.
Yeah, a little bit, but yeah, Mark brought up, Dr. Eskemia brought up exactly what I was going to say, that it's the companies that are going to do it, that are going to put their money on the line, that are going to come in and they'll look and they'll say, okay, you can support X number of beds or, you know, or no, it's not viable.
Exactly. Exactly. And I think, I think one of the things we should, we should all expect also is, as we move ahead, we're going to come back to the, to the board. We're going to bring every step of the way back to the board, updates at the very least is, you know, here's what we've got, here's what we're packaging and putting together. And then, again, what I would, I would, what I'm expecting to do is, again, open it all up, leave it wide open and let the experts talk to us about what, what, you know, the various types, this public-private partnership, I mean, the modeling rather, whether it's multifamily or traditional residence halls, that, those sorts of things, they're going to, they're going to speak to us about that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Strieboz, for being here.
Thank you.
President's report, Dr. Eskemia.
Okay. Mine's very quick today. If we can have, you can come up. So it is my pleasure and honor to introduce to you Ms. Lorette Williams, our new Executive Director of Communications and Marketing at Delmar College. Lorette's, we've been colleagues for a good while, many of, many of you all know Lorette. Lorette stood out amongst a group out there of professionals and came forth with her, with her experience and expertise and communications, and I just wanted everybody to, I wanted to recognize her and thank her and welcome her, welcome her onboard at Delmar College and certainly give her an opportunity to share any comments you may have.
Well, I just want to let you all know that I'm very, very excited to be here at Delmar College. I spent the bulk of my career working in education and then went off to learn something learn something about bridges. And bridges are great, but I sure am glad to be back in education. So I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. So in our regents' report, we have three items to cover today. The first is an update on our board policy discussion. As you recall, in October, we looked at a draft policy for board revision, review and revisions. And in conversation with staff, including Ms. Tammy McDonald, who oversees our, our policy process right now and, and the documentation, we had a discussion at the executive committee meeting about delaying our adoption of a policy based on some work that staff was going to be introducing to us in the upcoming fiscal year. And so I'm going to ask Ms. McDonald to come forward and, and help me through this because these, these two, these next two slides, she, she drafted for, for our discussion. But the idea was that staff was going to be bringing forward to us a project around our policy manual review that was going to include the organization of it, but as well as a review of, of anything that potentially is missing. And so I'm going to let you talk a little bit about that project, Ms. McDonald, if you would.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. What we'll be doing this, this next fiscal year is we will bring forward a project to look at our policy procedures manual as a whole. So the current, the policy that was, was brought forward last month, that particular policy will remain as a working document in the draft stage for now, as the chair mentioned. Administration is scheduled to conduct a review of the manual policy and procedures in fiscal year 21. Will include where are the policies placed? Do they comply with federal law, state law? All the different accrediting bodies we have, not just SAC, COC, but we have so many different programs that have their own accrediting agencies. So do, do they comply with those? What's the manual structure like? What's its formatting? Where are the placement of the policies in the right chapter? So kind of a whole, a full, comprehensive view of the policy manual. And then we're scheduled for that to have board review. Of course, some of the pieces like the formatting and the placement, the structure, you know, those are some of the technical things that we'll be looking at. But of course, if any policy, which are the board policies, the B sections of any policy, if there's any change in content, of course, that would have to come to the board for approval for any new or revisions to any of those B policies. Do you want to go to the, oh, I guess I can go to the next slide. Thank you. So what, the timeline for this project is basically from now, the project review and timeline we're presenting to the board today, from January to August. There has to be some work done because I think that the chair mentioned before in our previous meeting about the different policies to, to name an owner of the policy. Because all policies, I mean, the whole policy manual per view as far as, as some oversight of it is under my responsibility, but I don't own every single policy. So we have different members of, of, of the team or even the board, because I know chapter one is primarily board policy, specifically addresses the boards. So everyone will have a primary owner and then we will also place a secondary owner. So that's going to take some time because we have quite a few, and we have over like 400 pages of policies. So that's going to take some time to go in. And so we'll do that work. We'll do the primary policy owner to all the B policies between January and August of 2020. We will also determine best practices to conduct a review and possibly engage in external, some external expertise as needed in the different phases of this project. Do we need someone to provide us expertise in what's the best formatting or the best organization, or the compliance that we just talked about with the different types of regulatory agencies or state and federal? So if we need to engage expertise, we'll, we'll do that. Or maybe some best software or practice for that. And then October, September and October, we anticipate the project to begin. So that's the, the timeline that we have laid out.
And so, for example, one of the sessions that I went to at our ACCT conference related to board policy governance and review, and, and this particular session was conducted by folks from California and Oregon. And those two state associations actually have a service that you can purchase that relates to their specific regional accreditation body, their specific state legislatures, but then also federal title and, and other federal legislation. And so you can actually purchase updates to your policy manual, but they give you a suggested format and way to organize it. So, so this is going to take into account how to organize, how to access, because right now the access to update our policy manual is quite cumbersome. And then we'll also take into account if we're missing anything and do we need to review and update any additional policy items. And then, not lastly, but, but including then the board's policy on review, process, recension, et cetera. And so as opposed to adopting a policy today that over the next several months would be the official board policy, but then we're also going to have this major work in place, I'm, I'm asking your permission to delay our adoption of that board policy. And let's fold that into this work that staff is recommending to us.
Do you need a motion to table?
It's, it's a discussion item, so consensus would be fine. Mr. Bennett?
I, I'm probably confused. It's going to be a complete review of the policy manual. Is that correct?
Well, we're going to look at the format, the structure, the chapters, what's in the chapters. Should it be, a chapter be named something differently? Should we consolidate some chapters? So we're going to look at a complete look, review of the organization of it, because maybe it could be more clear, or maybe some things could be combined and, and some policies cross-reference, because you have one policy, if you change it, it affects five. So there's a lot of those things that we need to tie together. And then also, as the chair has mentioned, we would have a review of, do we have policies in place, best practices for things like federal and state compliance? And then also our accrediting agencies. Do we have those policies we need? So there will be that type of, that type of review.
But yes, a complete review.
So I'm confused as to why. I thought I saw references to two different policies in, in the agenda. Why are we referencing two different policies?
In today's agenda?
Yes.
We do have additional policies, and we can still update policies as we go along. This is not going to preclude us from adopting policies today in our regular agenda or in the future if staff has, has revisions or policies they want us to, they want us to adopt. This is a whole-scale reorganization and access, and access to our existing policy manual. And are we missing anything? Are there gaps? So it's not, if you recall from our October agenda, staff had laid out, I think, a 10-year cycle. Was it a 10-year or a five-year cycle?
Yeah, it was a schedule. It was-
Scheduled cycle to review each chapter of our current policy manual. So we're going to delay adopting that and fold that into this process.
So are, are we not doing anything with B-316 today?
Correct. I was a little, help me understand what it means to be a working document. I want to make sure I, when you say it's a, it remains a working document. The spirit of the draft is going to be upheld by staff over the next year, year and a half as we conduct this policy review. But it's not going to be an adopted board policy. But they, they are hearing our, our desire to have a process by which board policies are reviewed. They wanted to actually take a bigger look at this, a bigger bite of this apple than, than just adopting a quick board policy for review. They want to do a complete comprehensive.
Right. I think I understand that. The way I look at it is, I believe our, our whole policy is sort of a, do we have any of our architects here? It's, we've been adding on. We've got an annex, so we amend here and we add here. And we've got kind of this conglomerate. And it's time to sort of reshuffle and make sure it all makes sense. But I'm not sure about following a spirit of a policy that's not adopted.
Yeah. So basically, we're not adopting a policy today, but they understand that the board, by both our self-evaluation documents as well as this draft discussion, that, that the board, this, this is a process that we wanted to have happen. Again, they're just-
That's where we're aiming. Okay, okay.
It's about policy management. It's about policy.
Like, like the, the reference I made in, in the PowerPoint of assigning policy owners, that is in the, the draft that we have. But, and that's part of like a process or procedure. So I would consider it like, like an A procedure. So in that spirit, we are going to move forward as we go into this new project of going ahead and identifying those policy owners. So that it will help as we come into this larger project.
Okay, that's helpful to me. Any concerns anywhere else? Okay. Well, then we're going to hear more about this. Some, we're not going to wait till August 2020 to hear more about it. You're probably going to have a, a update for us either January, February timeframe, correct, to kind of give us a sense of, of what the whole, the next few months are going to look like? Yes?
February, March.
February, March.
February, March.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Now comes the time for us to have just a quick headlines from, from each regent. If you have information you'd like to share from your learnings at the ACCT Leadership Conference that we attended in San Francisco. I know that Mr. Rivas had a cop, had some copies of things that he had passed out for us. Do you want to go ahead and start, Gabe?
I can. What I had Delia make copies of was some information that came from the advocacy workshop that I attended on that first day. It was a pre-congress academy. I also emailed everybody a complete set of my notes to save time. But the pre-congress academies, pretty much things that we already know about our trustee, about the trustee's role in advocacy and who we advocate to. Of course, our legislators are both federal and state and local leaders. A reminder that we do this in conjunction with the president of the college to establish public policy. And we talk to the state representatives, of course, always about our funding. We do that a lot every other year when we go up to Austin often. We, we need to also discuss setting our advocacy priorities. One thing that they said is to speak with one voice. And I emphasize the fact that we did that last time around with CCAP, where we had legislative agenda with them and the teachers' organization. And I think that made it easier for us to go forward to Austin and get our message across. I did send all my information to everybody. So you should have that. Let me go ahead and speak on other, I attended a session on diversity and equity, roles that the trustees and CEOs play to create, nurture, and sustain a campus culture that can ultimately lead to improving student success. Student success just seems to be an overall role in everything that we talked about. The big one, of course, and I think everybody was there, was the five-year budget planning model that talked about metrics and board policy. And that was presented by Lone Star Community College. It stresses to have a budget oversight strategy. The approvals of the budget are always a responsibility of the board and the administration. We were told at Lone Star College, they officially review their budget policy planning. The board needs an update yearly on the progress of that five-year plan. Not just have a five-year plan, and I'll look at it until the five years is over. But that went on, and I think others will probably report on that. There were other sessions that we attended, that I attended. One, one that really struck a nerve, I guess, to, to say, was called the truth about ACE, ACES. That stands for adverse childhood experiences. I guess it struck a chord with me because I have a grandson that's stigmatized with the stigma of having HDHD. And sometimes he has a tendency to use that as an excuse for bad behavior. And as he gets older, he's learning about that. And he knows what's right and wrong now. So he's not as bad as he was when he was younger. And consequently, his schoolwork is getting better. So that's good about that. But I wonder sometimes if that leads to college students. I don't know. I've never heard any other session that I've been to talk about students that are affected by childhood dysfunction, household dysfunction, or abusive childhood experiences, neglect, things like that, lack of attention. That actually perpetuates to the college student. I don't know. I think it hits the younger students easier. But that was something to think about. Like I said, there were a lot of information. It was a good conference. The hotel was convenient. Everything was easy to get to, especially when you have a scooter, for, for me, because my mobility issues. But everybody should have a copy of my report that I emailed to everybody. If you don't, let me know and I'll be glad to resend it.
Thank you, Regent. Others?
Regent Bennett and myself attended the pre-congress academy on making tough ethical and legal decisions. We were fortunate that Mr. Rivera was one of the presenters. So it was nice to have one of our own among us to, to help guide us in that discussion. I believe at your seat are also some handouts from that session. And I, I found the whole conference very informative and helpful. That session in particular, though, we came away with it, we looked at a bunch of different scenarios and came away with the phrase, "It depends." So I'm really grateful that we have such a good counsel to guide us in those difficult decisions. And I was reassured that many of the decisions that we make are the correct ones, certainly in the eyes of the law. And I think we have a, a great history of communicating about any potential problems that we may have and, and trying to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to be a transparent community college and, and give people the, the right to speak publicly as they're entitled to. So I won't, I went to some of the sessions that Regent Rivas also went to. And, and overall, I really appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Others? Mr. Salinas, can you report from the ACCT conference?
Let's see, where is this? Yeah. I think, you know, Ed and I, you know, we were at a function, we were in one of those seminars. And, and I think Ed can bring up the point that after it was over, I went ahead and approached the people that were making the seminar, that were, you know, talking about it. So maybe Ed can bring that up. Because he was standing right there next to me.
Sure. Regent Bennett?
Okay. So I did attend the pre-conference seminar that was hosted by Mr. Rivera and another attorney. And we had two attorneys there. So when you conclude that it depends, that's as close to concurrence as you're going to get. So he covered a lot with, or they covered a lot with the, the Bill of Rights, portions of the Bill of Rights. And why does that apply to us? Well, we're elected, the regents are elected by the taxpayers and we impose tax. So we're part of the government. So we are constrained by the Bill of Rights. We have, none of our policies can be more restrictive than the Bill of Rights. And those apply to everyone. Illegal search and seizure. Sometimes a corporation can search your personal belongings. And when a governmental entity wants to search them, they may well be required to have a search warrant. And we have to be very cognizant of that. So we, we have to pass our, not only our policies, but enact our policies with that, the, the, looking forward to the restrictions of the Bill of Rights. So that, that I found was very important. We also discussed that there were some people from a college that has a different type of policy manual than we have. And they have an annual policy review. Their manual was 100 and some pages, I believe. So they have an annual policy review of the entire policy. They also have governance training on each agenda. And one of the things they looked at was what, what good, for whom, at what cost? So they were doing a cost benefit analysis of everything. Shared governance, that, that was a big issue. Some colleges have, on the president's council, they have a member of the faculty. And the faculty member makes a presentation to the board every meeting. So they share, they totally share the governments, the governance, and it's totally transparent. On the Lone Star College, the five-year plan, really a good presentation. I asked for the spreadsheet. I have not gotten it yet. One of the things that they focus on in that five-year plan is the full-time student equivalent, the cost to educate that full-time student equivalent. In Texas, the average is $11,700. So they make certain that their cost is under the $11,700. And those are just numbers that tell how efficiently the college is being run. Let's see. But they had a great presentation. Strategic enrollment management, one of the colleges was having a dramatic decline in enrollment. It was going down close to 10% per year. So they brought in a consultant. They said, we've got a problem. The consultant said, show us your plan. When they brought the plan forward, they said, that's not a plan. That's why you're having a problem. And what they did was they segregated the groups, the age groups. And what they did was they segregated the groups, the age groups. They said, "If you're focusing on dual-credit students during these hours, you're eliminating the possibility of educating the 22- to 34-year-olds. So you have to structure how you use your classrooms." And they were going down 10% every year. The consultants turned it around. They started increasing. And what they said was, the main problem was that they were doing the same thing they did the year before, but because they had lower enrollment, they doubled down on it. Well, it didn't work. So the consultants really did work. And that was the group that we talked to. Marketing retention plans, short-term strategic plans. We have to understand, we, the Regents, have to understand our enrollment, the components of our enrollment, not just the total. So we have to look at the four-credit, the dual-credit, the traditional, the full-time equivalent, the contact hours. We should have all that information. It's important to know what the components of the increase or decrease is and what the components of the total enrollment is, to fully understand what we need to know to govern. So that's all I had.
Can I ask you a question, Ed?
You can.
On that Lone Star presentation, they talked a little bit about budget assumptions. Do you remember when Raoul gave us a presentation that we started somewhat of a five-year plan?
Oh, it is a five-year plan.
Were we conservative in our assumptions, or?
Mr. Garcia, I can say yes, because his enrollment increase was zero. So that, I say, is conservative. Now, if it declines, then that was a liberal assumption.
I think Lone Star used like a 2% enrollment increase.
And they've got a different market.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I attended the Chairman's Academy as a pre-conference academy, and then attended several sessions on board retreats, on technology and governance, on onboarding and board policy. Just was wanting to check our onboarding process against what others are doing. And so spent some time looking at those policies. And so specifically around policy, I already mentioned what California and Oregon are doing. And so some of those best practices, I'm going to share some of those documents with Ms. McDonald as we move forward on that project. There was some discussion around board retreats. One of the sessions I attended was on a community college who does two board retreats a year. And they are, the focus of them is primarily on the board's working process and not necessarily on topics. They'll add a topic, they'll add something related to student success, or potentially housing, or, you know, whatever a topic might be. But they spend time on the board goals and do a two-day retreat, the first day of which is the board's self-evaluation, and the second day of which is the start of the president's evaluation. And so what we do over the course of four or five months, they really streamline into a two-day session and then complete the president's evaluation a couple of, at the next month. So they don't combine both of those things in a two-day period. But the fact that they really shrink the start to finish of that within just about a 30 or 45-day period, I thought, was interesting and might be a model that I look at for the spring for us. And then they do a follow-up retreat about six months later where they check on their board goals. And they do a check-in that is related to strategic plan and to the board's self-evaluation goals. So there might be some things that we could do around those lines and potentially even bringing in a facilitator so that it's not up to staff to facilitate that two-day retreat, but could be somebody that we could potentially bring in and look at. So I've talked to Dr. Eskamia about that opportunity and see what we might be able to do for the spring for that. So those were a couple of the highlights of the things that I attended and how I hope will inform our work over the next few months.
Can I add one more?
Absolutely.
I was astounded by this. It was a session called Get In, Stay In, about helping underserved students secure financial aid. And I know we're doing a lot for that, and we're trying to get better at it. And one thing that I mentioned to them was that I think CCISD is now requiring students to fill out a financial aid or the FASF form before they can graduate. But I couldn't believe that, they say approximately $130 million of Pell Grants is left on the table every semester because they don't apply. I mean, so many students actually qualify, but the parents won't fill out the paperwork because they don't trust the government.
Yep. The last legislative session, there was a bill passed that will require all graduating seniors in high school across Texas, to apply.
Good.
And that's going to be an exercise that here is already ginning up a lot of response. And Louisiana went through that. So if you do a little search or anything, you can find that the Louisiana results were dramatic. Other states are following suit. So it's not just, it'll be more, it'll be all the school districts in Texas, public school.
Well, thank you all for your time to attend the conference. And that's several days out of our busy schedules, and we appreciate the time that you took to do it. Appreciate you sharing. If there's additional information, copies of presentations, et cetera, that you would like, the rest of the Regents to have, be sure and get those to Delia, and she would forward those to us. Lastly, on the Regents' reports is a reminder that this coming Thursday, the 14th, at 10:00 a.m., we're going to have the teleconference seminar, or webinar, or whatever, Zoominar, whatever we're going to call it, with a financial trainer from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And that will take about an hour. So again, if you're planning to join at the president's conference room, let Delia know, and she'll make sure there's plenty of coffee ready for you. And then those might be folks that will be doing that from their offices as well.
That'll be the first part of two presentations. One statewide view on budgeting and so forth. And then we're going to bring it all home, and Mr. Garcia is going to have a presentation for y'all to follow up on that. So two parts to that.
Great. If there's any questions or problems connecting, please let Delia know, and she'll call IT. Yes, sir, Mr. Bennett? Did you have a follow-up?
On pending business, I've asked for some documents, and I've not gotten any documents. It's been over a month. What am I doing incorrectly?
Which ones are you speaking of?
The 250 line items for the South Side campus.
So those are still being fine-tuned? Those are in the architect's hands?
I don't need the fine-tuned one. I need, there was an excerpt on the last agenda, or an agenda last month, that had, I think, six items. I just want the rest of the 250. I understand they're being worked on.
Yeah.
But I want to go, I've arranged with a professional to go over those so that I can understand them. And I understand it's a working document, but the document exists, so I'd like to get ahold of it.
I'll do what I can to find them and get ahold of them. I don't have them. I'll do what I can. I'll meet with you after this, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So that leads us into the pending item list. So these are board items that we have discussed and are going to be coming back before the Board in December. The financial indicator training that Dr. Eskamia just referred to, a discussion around the strategic plan targets. We adopted the KPIs as part of the strategic plan. And so this is going to be the discussion on what is our baseline and our targets for the strategic plan. And then there'll be a foundation update and a review of the tuition policy prior to making any changes in that. At this point in time, we are not planning a January board meeting, and so you'll see pending items for February include financial and investment reports, our Civitas update, set the enrollment date, excuse me, set tuition, and an enrollment update reviewing where we are enrollment today at that point in time. Mr. Rivera, I'm going to ask you to check on when we want to do our annual ethics review. So we'll either do that in February or March. So let's look at the calendar and figure out where you want that to be. Any questions about the pending documents item, or pending business item, excuse me?
On that presentation on Thursday, if I decide to come, do we know how many Regents are going to be there? We can't have more than a quorum, can we?
It's a workshop.
It's a workshop.
Is it posted?
I think it is.
Because we don't, do we have more than four that are going to be in attendance?
So far, I have possibly one.
Okay.
You can go and put me down on that list. I'll try to make it here.
And so because we are not convening, we're not discussing business, it will be, and we'll all be in different locations, remotely.
It's a workshop.
It's a workshop. Okay.
I'm just asking.
Maybe discussion of college business would be incidental to the workshop.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Just an added point. You know, this presentation is actually done by Mr. Rowland from the CB, so it's not necessarily myself or any executive member of the college. It's being rolled out by another entity.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. We will move into our consent agenda. There are approval of minutes from two different meetings, acceptance of the investments for October, and financials for September. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
That's a move.
Mr. Rivas makes the motion. Mr. Salinas, second. Sorry, he waved his finger first. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. That motion carries. Moving into our regular agenda, we have the privilege of hearing about a recommendation for Professor Emeritus status, and Dr. Beth Lewis is going to brief us on that.
Thank you. This is always an exciting time for us when we get to do this. So I'll ask Carolyn to come up, please. And I'll read the resolution to you. You can all stare at her awkwardly. So this is the resolution in recognition and profound appreciation for distinguished service by Carolyn Mock. Whereas Ms. Carolyn Mock, Professor of Kinesiology, served as an exemplary educator among her peers at the college for 34 years. During her tenure at the college, Mrs. Mock created and developed several courses along with teaching over 10 different activity lecture courses demonstrating her range and diversity of expertise. Whereas Mrs. Mock dedicated countless hours to the college and community through her involvement on numerous committees as both a member and chair. She presented at the local, state, and national level, as well as provided leadership in several organizations, such as the Texas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, Southern District American Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, and the American Heart Association. In 2003, she served as the 74th president for the Texas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. Whereas Mrs. Mock's list of recognitions and acknowledgements is quite notable. She has received local, state, and national accolades, which include the Southern District American Alliance of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Honor Award, Delmar College's Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence, and the David K. Brace Award for the Texas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, the highest declaration a member of this organization can receive. Now therefore, be it resolved that Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Mrs. Carolyn Mock with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day of November 12, 2019. Is there a motion to approve this recognition?
Second.
Ms. Hutchinson makes a motion to approve this resolution. Mr. Rivas makes the second. Dr. Eskamia, would you like to make any comments?
So it is our honor, Carolyn, to have you here after a distinguished career. We've, you and I have got to know each other pretty well over the last 11 years or so. But you were here many years before that, and your dedication to our students is so appreciated. So on behalf of the entire faculty, staff, students, administration, I'm going to dare say the Board of Regents, even though they're going to say it themselves, congratulations and a heartfelt thank you for what you've done for Delmar College.
Thank you.
Are there a Regent comment? On behalf of the Board, thank you for your dedication. While I have not had the pleasure of knowing you personally and being under your tutelage while at Delmar College, I have heard great things. And it is faculty like you that make Delmar College unique and really make it what it is. We don't have the face-to-face, sitting at this table, we don't have the face-to-face with the students. We rely on you. We rely on the faculty and the staff who do have that interaction. And we know it's because of faculty like you that our students thrive. So thank you very much, and thank you for representing the best of what is in Delmar College faculty.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all those in favor of Professor Emeritus resolution for Ms. Carolyn Mock, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Well, on behalf of my 34-year career at Delmar, which actually began as a college student, earning my associates here, I came to find my lifelong passion, and it was due to the mentors I had in the kinesiology department, to name a few. Dr. Pat Schmidt, Ray Nickel, Barbara Scopolitis, Charlie Tees, and et cetera, et cetera, Shelby Torrance. Then I transferred to Stephen F. Austin, where I obtained my master's after the bachelor's degree, and was fortunate to be hired at Delmar shortly after I did a one-year stint in Uvalde at their community college. But hustled back to Corpus as soon as the call came and the job advertisement was posted. So I consider myself very fortunate to stand before the audience here today, and thank you for the most fulfilling career. I don't think I'm unusual in the length of my tenure. I think that says a lot about the faculty at Delmar that stay for, they're not just lazy. They love Delmar, and Delmar is part of who I am. And I count myself fortunate to have colleagues here today, my Chair, Dr. Judy Phillips, and Kristy, who is our Intemoral Director and Instructor in the Kinesiology Department. And I thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to your family for sharing you with us for 34 years. Thank you, Mr. Mock, for being here.
He had to leave, but, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a wonderful thing to be able to do this. And moving on, Dr. Lewis is going to talk to us about a new Bachelor of Science degree in nursing, our update.
This is actually not just an update. We're going to be asking for action today, as you know. This is, we've talked about this for a while now, and we're ready to move on it. I'm going to ask Dr. Van Gievelon, our Chair of Nursing, to come up, and Dr. Jennifer McQuah, our Nursing Program Director, to come up, because they're going to answer any questions that you have about the specifics of our nursing program. So let me tell you a little bit about the basics on our program, just a little bit of history. Started the VN track, Vocational Nursing Track, in 1948, and the Registered Nurse Track in 1967. So I think we've been at this for a little bit of time. In 2006, those programs, which were separate, merged to form the Department of Nursing Education. And through that, we offer the VN, the Vocational Nursing Certificate, the LBN to RN, Associate of Applied Science Degree, the RN, Associate of Applied Science Degree, and then the AA Nurse Education Pathway to BSN. All of those are pre-licenced track. We currently have, and I bet you wouldn't know this, that we have 1,600 nursing majors at Delmar College. And we admit between 95 and 100 students every fall and spring. Right now, we have 323 students who are enrolled in our nursing program. In 2014, we transitioned to a concept-based curriculum. We've talked about that a little bit more, but I'd stop for a second and ask if anybody needs a refresher on the concept base? Okay? Our experts here are going to just tell you about the concept base. Dr. McQuah.
Thank you. Yes, the concept base differs from the traditional, or I guess, block curriculum. In the nursing traditional curriculum, you would have a separate pediatrics course, a separate maternal OB course, mental health. In the concept base, we really integrate that across all levels and all classes for all four levels of the program. So the students really get, we dive deep into those concepts, you know, all across all four levels. So the students really get, we dive deep into those concepts, you know, all across all four levels.
I don't think anyone will be surprised to know that there is a shortage of nurses, not only certainly in South Texas, but across the nation. And that Bachelor's Degree is becoming the preferred degree for bedside nursing. And you can see the survey data here. I'm not going to read that to you, but everyone is, is in agreement that there is, there is a lot of opportunity. There are a lot of vacancies. We need to hire more BSNs, is what they're saying. In some areas, they are only hiring BSNs. That the ADN, the Associate Degree Nursing, is not, is not the, the one that will get the job anymore and certainly will not advance anymore. Now let me make this really, really clear, and we've talked about how to make this super, super clear, and I probably should have done it in some sort of exploding font. But adding the BSN will not change our ADN program. It is not going away. It is not changing it. Okay? If the board chooses to approve this request today, it simply means that students will have another option after they finish their Associate Degree Nursing. Okay? There are other Texas community colleges who have already done this. You can see the list here. Certainly everything from Austin Community College, Collin, Grayson, Laredo, Lone Star College, the Montgomery Campus, and South Texas College. All of these have already gotten their BSNs approved. And you can see the projection there and their approval dates. So we surveyed our current DMC nursing students, 85, almost 86% of the graduates from our program. And 96% of our currently enrolled RN students have said that they would be very interested in pursuing a BSN at Delmar College. You can see what the short-term benefits are there on the left. Obviously, the requirements for earning that advanced degree. They can obtain better nursing skills and critical thinking. It may become, across the board and employer requirement, that you have to have a Bachelor's Degree. Obviously, you're going to have higher pay. And I like this one, and I didn't realize this, the ability to enter the military as an officer if you have a BSN. The long-term benefits, of course, job advancement, security, and increased job opportunities. So let's talk a little bit about our faculty and our physical resources. Currently, we have 25 nursing faculty. We have two PhD administrators. You're looking at them here. We have eight faculty who hold doctorate degrees in nursing. It's a DNP. And five faculty are currently pursuing their doctorate degrees. Our current physical resources, our classrooms, our clinicals, our labs, they're adequate. They can accommodate growth. Now, the thing is, is that the RN to BSN curriculum is a hybrid approach. We talked about hybrid earlier, where part of it is face-to-face, part of it is online. Because the post-licensure requires fewer lab and clinical hours, students, because students are already practicing RNs. So when we're trying to get them to the licensure, to get them to, to pass their RN exam, then it takes a lot of lab hours. It takes a lot of clinical hours. But if they come into the BSN, they're already practicing nurses. So it doesn't take quite as much. Okay, so everybody's favorite category, our budget. And Dr. McQuarrie, or Dr. DeLeon, if you wanted to talk about, about budget, we've spent a lot of time on this together.
I'll defer this to, to Dr. McQuarrie since, you know, we, we partnered in developing the proposals and submitting them, but I think we clearly worked on it together, so.
So in regards to faculty salaries, with this new proposed program, we anticipate five new faculty members, which is illustrated there on that first row, faculty salaries new. One program administrator, myself, it would be reallocated money. I'm currently the, serving as the program director for the ADN. Our intent is that I would move into the program director for this BSN program. Clerical new would be clerical support, probably one individual for our new program. The fringe benefits are listed there by years one through five. Supplies and materials, that's just typical, you know, supplies that would be required to run the program. Office supplies, things like that. In regards to library and instructional or technology resources, those are upgrades or additions to library software that we would anticipate needing throughout the next five years. Regarding equipment, for year one and year four, that relates to our equipment in our simulation labs or our health assessment labs that would probably have to be maintained or upgraded as the program continues to roll out each year. Other costs are primarily for things like Surface Pros or iPads that we use in the, in the classroom and/or lab. Sometimes we use them for testing. Likely, we'll use them in the clinical setting for documentation purposes.
Okay, so what's next? Here's the timeline, and you can see that we are in sort of the middle of, of a lot of steps that have to happen here. Okay? So you can see the things that have already been completed, that RN to BSN degree plan and the syllabi. We've already submitted to the coordinating board, still waiting on their response. We have submitted to the Texas Board of Nursing, waiting on their response. The, we'll have to do a SACS proposal for a level change. That's a substantive C for a level change. We are currently a Level 1, which means that we can award Associate Degrees. To go to a Level 2 is a change that SACS would have to approve, that we can, we can award Bachelor's Degrees. And then the idea would be that we would start that RN to BSN program track in fall of 2020. So about a year from now, a little less than a year from now. And then it would require, because it's a level change, it would require a visitation by SACS and probably the Texas Board of Nursing, so. And would be happy to answer any questions that you.
How many, how many students, how many nurses can you accommodate at, at the beginning of the program?
So for years one through five, we expect our enrollment to be 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, respectively, for those years. Probably more than that. Most of our students right now that are currently enrolled have completed the core requirements, or they graduate with the core requirements by the time they get their AAS as well. So we expect, you know, many more applicants than, than that as we continue to go each year by year.
Do you, you have to have a BSN before you become a nurse practitioner? Or do you have to have a doctor before you become a nurse practitioner?
Before.
Before you become an NP?
Yes, that does require a BSN.
But not a doctor?
No.
Just a BSN, okay.
There are, however, programs where they can go from an RN to MSN and skip, and skip the BSN to be a nurse practitioner, to be a little, little clearer. On the enrollment, we looked at, again, you know, conversations with the other schools that also were, were going towards, you know, starting the RN to BSN at community college. And so we did try to stay within that number that most schools have. I think the first one was Austin Community College, and their enrollment started at 25 to 30. And so we felt that that was something to stay in line with.
We do have room. The, the classrooms, we have the room for them, for the new program?
I, I think classroom.
What we have in existing.
What we have in existence is, you know, as Dr. Lewis mentioned, you know, we, we, we don't require much of that physical facility demand for this particular program. And again, because we're looking at generally doing a hybrid. Now, the other is also that I think as a program, we have done the hardest part, or one of the biggest parts of addressing licensure. You know, and we're, I think we can say we're good at that. We, we've shown that through our ADN success. And so that's always the biggest obstacle for programs, is getting their students to that RN licensure. And we've done that, and it requires lots of lab and clinical hours and physical space. And I think we're well in line in continuing to accommodate our Associate Degree Nursing Program and the number of those students. So these students are going now into a different aspect of, of their education. And so we're looking at, again, more of a hybrid. And, and for some instances, you know, it, some courses might lend themselves to totally online. But I think we look more towards the student success as we see it here at the community college works better with a hybrid format.
Yes, Dr. Sherwood?
Two questions, and one, do I understand correctly that students won't be admitted into this program unless they are already RNs?
Correct. That will be an admission requirement, that they must pass their NCLEX first, become licensed.
Become licensed first, okay. And the other, on the balancing of the budget and the income from the program, I didn't see that included in here. How is that looking? When does the, is there a break-even point? Typically, that's included in the coordinating board's proposal.
Yes. Row.
Yes, so the, the analysis is prepared so that there is a break-even point every year. Your three main funding streams are just going to be your base appropriations that kicks in really in the second year, fiscal year 2022, after the biennial process.
Right, you don't get to include it for the first two years.
Yes. And then the next piece is tuition and fee. So the tuition and fee rate is going to be based on our standard typical tuition rates that we have today, pending any additional changes in the future that the board may, may approve in the future, right? And then there's the property tax base, which will probably add possibly, depending on our enrollment, about another, less than, less than half a penny in our, in our property tax levy rate. Total at the end of the year, so just to give you some numbers, year five, the total revenue is about $786,000, breaking even with the expense. That's the vision so far.
$786,000 in year five?
Year five.
You're showing a two-point.
That's the cost.
Oh, that's a total. That's a total.
Cumulative total for the five-year period, so, yes.
So that was my level of question as well, is where, because while I understand that we have a property tax bucket, when we're talking about a direct program like this, the contact hour reimbursement and the tuition and fees would be specifically allocated to this program. And overall, the property tax makes up the difference. So I guess I'm, I'm interested in a more specific answer about years one through five. What is the projected revenue for this program? And at what point do we, and I don't mind subsidizing it out of the, out of the, the property tax general fund that we have. But, but at what, but what is the actual revenue that is specifically allocated to this program?
I agree. We need a difference between new money.
Right.
New tuition and property taxes that we're already, are already allocated somewhere.
So, so let's, let's go breakdown year by year, right?
Okay.
So for year one, the tuition and fee based on the projected enrollment is $96,000. The subsidy portion would be property taxes of $225,000. There's about another $85,000 in miscellaneous income that I, I have an email to John right now, a text to see what that is. But I think there's, has to be, has to do with some grant funding, but I want to confirm with John Johnson. So I'm still waiting on that text response. Fiscal year 2022, base operating funding is $82,508. And this is based on a contact hour reimbursement of $5.44, which is the recent adopted rate. I'm assuming this is going to be the rate moving forward, meaning flat level funding for the next five years for the program. And this is actually based on contact hours, projected contact hours that are going to be generated by the program.
And you said that's $82,000 for contact hour reimbursement?
Eighty, I'm sorry, the contact hour rate is $5.44. The, the revenue is $82,508. That is correct.
Okay.
The difference then is going to fall into the property taxes of $117,000.
So take property tax out of your equation.
Sure.
I want to know tuition and fees and contact hour reimbursement.
So year three, 2023, that's $82,508, tuition and fees, $168,521. Year four, it's $103,132. The tuition is $207,227. And then year five, the base appropriation projected is $103,132, and the tuition and fees is $247,833.
Okay. So we were talking about subsidizing, and I think it's important for us to understand that property tax is going to be subsidizing this program, which is what it's designed to do. So I don't want it, I don't want it to come across wrong. In, in the final year, at 450, no, $350,000 would be the tuition and contact hours generated, and the rest would be from property tax.
So it's in line when you look at our overall stream at the top level, where property tax is pretty much funds our operations, period. So percentage-wise, when you look at the program relative to the bigger scale of our operations, it's in line. Percentage-wise, by the pie, if that makes sense.
If you can, just as a report to us through, Dr. Eskamia, just break down those numbers on that budget chart. Just give us, update that chart for us, then we've got those numbers.
Yep.
Update to have the income, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. I agree.
Other questions? Mr. Bennett?
I, I want to make certain I understand. You just gave us a five-year projection. You did.
Yes, sir.
Was this included?
On the revenue, yes.
Was this included in it?
Was what included? I'm not clear.
The five-year projection for the college that you gave us a few months ago.
Oh, no. So, so the five-year, that was before any discussion of rolling this out?
So this is going to add to that increase in, in ad valorem taxes, which I, I don't remember the exact number, but in five years, it's going to be over 30 cents. Am I correct?
I would have to revisit, but yeah, I think we're close to 30 cents. Both the operating, as well as our debt service combined.
So this would add to it. My constituents are telling me they're tired of 30 cents. They don't want to increase the property taxes. Is there any way we can find other areas to save this amount of money?
I would have to give it some more thought. I mean, I, I don't think that's a quick and easy question. I think in general.
It wasn't designed to be.
So, you know, there is that, you know, tying this into the five-year plan, I mean, we get that, and I was anticipating that. You know, this level of investment, there, there are different means to do exactly what you're saying. Other means to fund these, these operations at the, at the campus. I think we do need to do more analysis on the, on the MNO side. You know, one of the things that restricts these sorts of programs, these investments that these colleges made, that these other colleges have made, you know, one of the efforts that was made at the legislature was to try to have differential tuition, okay, for these, for these types of programs. That wasn't allowed at the legislature. So there were attempts to make that. So, so we have to remain at the, there, there can't be differential tuition, tuition for this program for, for the Bachelor's level. So there were efforts made to offset that. So what, what it does do, it, it does cause the institutions to, to invest in, in these sorts of programs. I understand what you're saying about the tax rate, and I get that. We'll have to do that deeper analysis on the MNO side to embed these, these costs into fixed, into fixed costs that come on the MNO side. We'll have to sit down and spend more time on that. Mr. Versi.
If I might add, you know, Dr. Eskamia, I know in regards, it's.
Sorry, sorry. I was looking this way.
I, I think, you know, when it comes to funds, I know recently, Dr. McQuarrie and I attended a dean and directors meeting in Austin, and there was a couple of the schools that have already started the RN to BSN. And, you know, the response of the number of students interested to start the program was overwhelming. It was, you know, just almost triple in the number than they had anticipated. So I think that when, and I don't know if this adds again on to increasing enrollment, not only for this particular program, but we're talking about students who come to Delmar to get their, and complete their RN degree and Associate Degree Nursing. However, when now they come to Delmar, their path has changed in that they're also looking at moving forward with that baccalaureate. So they're coming to Delmar to not only, what we have been accustomed to is only coming to take the courses. is only coming to take the courses required to complete that ADN. However, now they're coming to Del Mar to take the added other general education courses. You know, we're talking about more students taking history and government than ever before, because they don't need that for the associate degree. More English, math, statistics. So that's an, I think, an overwhelming addition to the number. And whether that figures or calculates into, you know, the discussion, I, I think we, we've already done such an amazing job in trying to advance the practice in nursing, because we encourage our current students to move forward, complete that here, but go to the university. And now they come to Del Mar and get it all done here.
The number sixteen hundred that was talked about earlier, you know, there, there's program of interest, and then there's actual majors, or there's majors, and, and then there are those admitted to the selective requirements and so forth. And so it really speaks to that number of that sixteen hundred that are here aspiring.
For nursing.
That are aspiring for nursing, and I always call them the gonna-be nurses. Every one of them, you know, is what we hope for and, and aspire to support them to do. And that's, that's the other number that, that we can't calculate into this one, or that we haven't calculated into this, into this number as well. So as, as students are coming up with that program of interest moniker of, of nursing, they're not a nursing major per se, they're not necessarily involved, but they are bringing those revenues. They are bringing that enrollment, they are bringing that interest. This is going to add to it. Everybody I've talked to, everybody with, that we have been talking to for the nursing talks about, everybody from other colleges, our universities, and it's, it's a win all the way across the board. So there's some things that are not calculated in here. There's lots that are not calculated in here that we need to put our arms around to bring forth.
Yeah, I will also write, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, in Carol's big bucket math world, this is how I do math, there's about a million dollars of your five-year total of 2.5 that is offset by tuition and contact hour reimbursement. And so our commitment, and I, I just want to be transparent about it, is in a five-year period to, to earmark about a million and a half from our property tax general fund revenues to this expansion of the program, which, again, I'm okay doing. It's just about us understanding the numbers. It's not a 2.5 million dollar hit, it's really a 1.5 million dollar hit to, again, that general fund, because we're not going, there, there is going to be offset from, from contact hours and from tuition. So I just, that was my point of, of bringing that all up, was just to understand what that delta is and what our, our obligation is now out of that general fund.
You know, I forgot to add, when you asked the question about the, the tax levy rate thirty cents, thirty cents, the other piece that, that's not factored into the equation is the increase in the praise value. And so properties have gone up by six percent on the average over the five years, and we are now at 28 billion. So, so that's going to help, you know, that component will eventually impact the, the tax levy rate at the end of the day, too. So just food for thought.
But you did have that in your assumptions.
Yes.
The six percent, I think it was more of a three percent, I'm right, conservative approach. But the reality is the five percent over the last five, five years is really six percent.
Okay.
Other questions, yes?
Yeah, one other question on a different topic. Just because they're in places where these have been implemented, and there has been an opportunity for friction with your sister and, with our sister institution, could you just talk a little bit about the process you went through to ensure that that's not an issue? So that that's on the record?
I'll let y'all start now.
Well, I think from the very beginning, I think, well, Texas A&amp;M has always been a partner, and they are very visible at our advisory committee meetings. And so when our initial thought and discussion about even, you know, perhaps considering this, they were on the, at the table, and, and I think, you know, I can obviously say that there were some initial concerns. But when we started to have some more in-depth discussion, when we discussed the current state of their RN to BSN track that they have, their enrollment is much lower. I, I would say they probably averaged the last, I think we looked at maybe twenty, twenty-five is what they're kind of averaging at admitting, in that track. The, I think, the one thing that I think we, we came to, to be very confident in is that the number of the BSN students now eligible to go into their current programs, their DNP programs, their MSN, that's where their big emphasis is at. And, and they are very positive about that changing the trajectory of our current, you know, well, the new, you know, number of BSNs being eligible to move into their programs. And so I think those are, those are some of the things that we have discussed. We've, we've had some discussion, too, on perhaps even, they are very positive about partnering and even mentoring with our faculty when we get into that role, because we shared with them, you know, I think we're, we're, we're good at what we do at the associate degree level, and our faculty maybe have not had that opportunity to teach that, those type of particular courses at the baccalaureate level. And so we talked about maybe the partnering and the mentoring, and they were very, very positive, positive about that. I think the other that was very strong for us is that, you know, we had to include a teach-out plan in the event that the program was not successful, that, that they were, would partner with us to, to complete the students that had been enrolled. So I think they, they were very good about coming to the table. I think they're very positive about, you know, moving in this direction.
Other comments or questions? Steph is asking for a vote to approve their recommendation to move forward with the RN to BSN program. Is there a motion to proceed?
Also move in, sure.
Mr. Reeves makes the motion, is there a second? Is there a second from? Is there a second to that motion? There is concern. Shall we table this for a future? Okay, then we will be tabling this motion for further consideration at our December or February meeting. Do we need a motion to table? Yes. Thank you, there's a motion to table from Ms. Hutchinson and a second from Dr. Sherwood.
Under discussion.
Motion to table does not allow discussion?
Discussion, okay.
No discussion on a motion to table. So all those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, the motion to table for, for president to bring back at a future meeting has passed. Thank you all very much. I'm so sorry, well, actually, a motion to table doesn't allow, allow public comment either, so, that's great, okay. Sorry, just wanted to make sure I was doing everything right here. So now, Dr. Lewis, let's talk about the associate of science degree in chemical engineering.
Thank you. Okay. So what we are asking for is the approval for the associate of science degree in chemical engineering to be implemented in fall of 2020. This was approved by the curriculum committee in October 2017. The first thought you have is, why are you just now bringing it two years later then, if it was approved by the curriculum committee then? Because the coordinating board in the midst of all of this decided that they wanted to do a field of study on this, and that was going to change how we were going to shape this particular degree. And so until things could get settled by the coordinating board and how they wanted the field of study to lay out, then we couldn't really do anything. That has now been resolved. This is part of the field of study initiative, as I said, and the degree is not core complete, as all field of study degrees are not core complete from the coordinating board. The associate of science chemical engineering degree is currently offered at Austin Community College and McLennan Community College in Texas. Okay, so I am thrilled to tell you that there will be no budget included in here, because this literally will not cost anything, and here's why. Because we already offer what we call a chemical engineering, engineering emphasis. Here's the other concern about that, is that the degree that is awarded is a chemistry degree. Neither SAC COC nor the coordinating board recognizing, recognizes the term emphasis as meaning any kind of an award. It's either a degree in chemistry, or it's a degree in chemical engineering, okay? We've sort of blurred those lines a little bit over the past few years. We're having to unblur those lines now because of our reaffirmation visit primarily. But that means we have the facilities already in place, we have the faculty already in place, because we've been doing this as an emphasis for a number of years. Most of the degree, or most of the classes that are required at the sophomore-level STEM courses, we already offer, and you see them listed there, calculus one, two, and three, differential equations, university physics one and two, and organic chemistry one and two. We're already teaching these classes, we already have the faculty, we have the labs, and we have the facilities. So I would request approval of the associate of science degree in chemical engineering. Oh, I think I've left something out. I sure did. Let's get them jobs. Okay, so in chemical engineering, the BS level certainly is in high demand. That's not a, a surprise that they have the highest starting salaries in the engineering field. Of course, you know that one of our great, great partners just down the road from us at A&amp;M Kingsville, very strong in engineering, and some of our students who have done our chemistry degree with the emphasis in chemical engineering have gone on to Kingsville, to University of Houston, University of Texas, and Texas Tech University. You can see that according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that the job growth for chemical engineers is projected at six percent over the next decade, which is 20% greater than engineering hiring as a whole. So the job market looks good for students. We have everything in place that we need to be able to teach these students for this degree. So would request, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
The job market was for the BS engineering degree?
Yes.
What, and I'm confused.
Okay.
What does the associate's degree in chemical engineering give the student that receives it above what he's getting now?
Okay, so the focus is primarily on engineering. It's an engineering degree rather than a chemistry degree.
Do we not offer any engineering degrees?
We offer some, but not in chemical engineering.
So if he had a mechanical engineering associates, what does the chemical engineering associates give him that the mechanical does not?
It gives them more access to a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering. It's the same as if you're going to go into medical school, and you can either be a pulmonologist or you can be a neurosurgeon. Being a neurosurgeon is not going to help you get a job as a pulmonologist.
So it's going to transfer more credits to the four-year school?
Yes, more opportunities for scholarships, internships, employers.
It's a, it's a, it's a pathway into a bachelor's in chemical engineering, and it's designed primarily for our local, our local affiliations with, where, where we have articulation agreements already in place.
So they're going to accept all our, our transfers?
So that's, we built this with them in mind, and we have been working and building all of our engineering programs with, especially with Kingsville over the longer period of time, and now with A&amp;M Corpus Christi with their most recent programs. So yes, this is all built with our, with our local, regional universities in mind.
Because another concern I have is the ninety-some hours it takes to complete, and sixty hours is going to transfer. This one takes sixty hours to complete, and sixty hours transfers for, towards the bachelor's degree. Would that be correct?
Generally, yes. When you were talking about narrowing it down to a specific degree, and that's been kind of the problem that we have had with an emphasis, and I hate to keep doing the air quotes, but I don't know how else to explain, it's not a real degree that we've been offering. It's, it is, let me, let me back up, but it is a degree in chemistry. It is not a degree in chemical engineering.
This has more focus on it.
This has more focus.
More focus for transferability.
Because the coordinating board has said, now we've got a clear field of study that outlines exactly which courses you need to take to have that degree.
The other thing it does is, as a student knows that this offering is out there on the front end, that they begin preparing and aligning with the university of transfer in mind, going to the department of sciences over, or, excuse me, the department of engineering at A&amp;M Kingsville, say, with that in mind, like, like any other student transferring, this aligns them with them. The other thing is that we're doing all of these things with their faculty and staff in mind. I mean, we're, we're putting these things together with them.
So it's going to be more efficient for the student?
Yes.
Yeah, and the sooner the student can identify, the, the more efficient they are with, with achieving sixty hours and getting out of here right after graduation.
Do you have any projections for how many students we're talking about?
I am sorry, I don't, let me, Jack, you were, yes, Dr. Satherd, if you'd come up, Chair of Sciences and Engineering? Thank you, Jack.
How many students are currently in?
How, how many would, would be drawn to this program?
Right now, we have fifty students that are interested in, currently, the REM levels aren't necessarily allowing them to take some of the advanced physics and chemistry courses and whatnot, but they're well on their way.
So they're fifty that?
Fifty, fifty prospective, there's a program of interest for fifty students right now that are getting ready, and they're getting their scores ready, and getting all the prereqs in line to get into this engineering program. Certainly, and, and.
Very significant.
And, and, and over time, the more branding we have with this, the more successes we have, the more students going through, it's like everything else in our curriculum, our, our, our very popular courses become more marketed and, and more popular, and, and those numbers just start feeding off each other. But to have fifty right off the bat is, is a great start.
Absolutely.
Those are prospective students for the, for, primarily Kingsville, you're alma mater, aren't they? Amongst others, yeah, amongst, amongst others.
Thank you, Dr. Satherd, for being here.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve a associate in science degree in chemical engineering effective fall 2020? Dr. Sherwood made the motion. Second by Ms. Abert. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is discussion and possible action related to Del Mar College's TIRS policy, and TIRS is a tax increment financing zone. Ms. Lenora Keys is going to make the presentation.
Yes, thank you very much, and honestly, this is something that's worked, been worked on by Augie Rivera, myself, and Raul Garcia, and was at the request, again, of the board, that we began looking at policy. Attached in your packet is a copy of the policy itself, which was pretty lengthy, and so we've prepared a few slides to try to summarize the discussion of it. So please, as I walk through this. Background is that this tax increment financing actually comes under Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code, and this is how we may reinvest revenues into certain taxable areas for public works and other beneficial areas. It's called a reinvestment zone, and by tax code, this TIRS must be basically disadvantaged in some manner, as far as a depleted area. This is a brief summary of where we've been in the last several years, since 1982. TIRS one, seated Corpus Christi has not promoted a lot of TIRS over the last forty to fifty years. There's been three that we've participated in. The first one was in 1982 to 1996, and this was a very large zone that went from the whole bayfront all the way through North Beach. And basically, a lot of the, the structure that created the area for the aquarium and those other advances down in that area came out of this zone. And we participated in this, and it was quite a different schedule. The financing schedule was very different. It depended upon the value of the property itself. And then TIRS number two came to us in 2000 to 2022, and during that period, we participated at a declining rate, starting at a hundred percent, and went down to twenty percent, and we participated basically for ten years of that twenty-year period. And TIRS number three started in 2008 and went, and is continuing to 2028. This was re. This was re, reaffirmed in 2012, and so this TERS is continued and actually will end in 2028, and we are participating at a hundred percent, and that's for the downtown area. And there's a present proposal for TERS number four, and I'm just going to briefly mention it because, just to give you a total picture as to what's going on, and that's from the city, and they're proposing from 2019 to 2039 for the development of North Beach, and they are asking for a participation rate of a hundred percent for the first ten years and seventy-five percent for the next ten years. And that just gives you a summary or overview of the four TERS, the three that we've participated and the one that's being mentioned. But at this point, we want to discuss really an overview of the policy that's in front of you and the concept of a discussion of policy in itself. Normally, reinvestment zones are created by cities and counties. However, the law does around, allow for development or developmental organizations to come to you for TERS, as, as we've started stated previously under Chapter 311. And it's how you forego incremental tax increases over a set time period for public works. So for example, and in what we're proposing here, you take the tax revenues at a specific date, and that, those taxes continue on, and it's the increment above that tax amount that goes into the zone, or to benefit the zone.
That wording is not in the summary, though.
I'm sorry, where, sir?
In the summary, doesn't say the incremental taxes, it says the tax revenues. Delmar College District can reinvest tax revenues.
It should say incremental.
Next slide, the next slide. Right there, forego incremental tax revenue.
Yeah, it's on there, but in the summary, it's not in the summary.
I'm sorry, I was just providing the little basics dates as to what had happened, but they were incremental. And I apologize for my voice. I believe this is where we left off. So what we're proposing today for discussion is policy B4.37, and the purpose here is to help us facilitate an orderly and transparent process as we move forward to evaluate TERS requests that could come to us. We have, as of last week, produced this, or provided this policy to all of our councils, and we're provided in our packet today for your consideration and really discussion more in guidance today is, is the point of process because it is pretty involved. We do have a complete, if you look at it completely, there's a, all the process, the procedural steps, the review, the evaluation criteria, and then how it would lay out as we move forward, is if we were to receive a request from the city or county. And our policy basically states it would come from the city, and the city would pass it first. So as soon as practical upon receiving a request, the college administration would review it and bring it to the board. Our policy states that there would come, a request would come to the chief financial officer's office, and we would, as administration, review it. You would notice that in policy, it's very specific as to the criteria and the content, the type of information that have to come within the request, and then the administration would make a report with recommendation to you as a board, and you as a board would deliberate. You would deliberate on the types of infrastructure, the types of incentive, and the types of participation to what level. That could all come to the board and the timeframe, and that's all within our policy. Mr. Rivera, did you want to add anything?
Regents, I think you all know how, you know, where this is coming from, you know, there's currently in this community a TERS being, you know, established and talked about, and so we wanted to make sure with, with the proposal that's going to come to you, that you had a process set up. We didn't have anything in policy, and so this sets out at, like Ms. Keys pointed out, a rather, you know, detailed policy, and then it also spells out evaluation criteria. And importantly, it also leaves the discretion to you to deliberate every proposal on a case-by-case basis, but there's still, you know, uniformity to this, so you know how, and so that the public and the community knows how you're going to proceed whenever you get one of these requests. That's the whole intent behind it, and we know it's a detailed process, but if you look at it and go through it, we hope that it flows logically and really just spells out the procedure.
There's a comment that you made that I want to clarify. You said that, that we would have the opportunity to negotiate the infrastructure projects, and that was not my understanding. I thought the TERS would be established by a city or a county that includes what the money will be spent for. We have an opportunity to say whether or not we'll participate financially and at what percentage over what period of time.
Yes, you said it much more correctly than I did.
Okay, so we, we would not be negotiating the actual projects or infrastructure improvements?
Correct. We would be negotiating our own side of the participation.
That's what I wanted to understand.
The numbers associated with.
Okay.
One other highlight is, is that you'll note that in your criteria, it emphasizes educational relevance. I mean, it's got to make sense to you all as the Delmar College District Board of Regents that, you know, that your participation is relevant, so I wanted to point that out as well.
And I think it's very relevant that you'll notice in the policy, it states that it would meet the mission of the college.
Questions?
Yes, is the draft policy based on other examples? Did you find other examples that community college districts have?
Yes.
Yes, and in fact, we actually had an initial draft. We had some assistance with the Bickerstaff Law Firm in Austin, so they came up with the initial draft that we then looked at and revised and reworked to make it even more relevant to us, so. But yes, the answer is yes, we did look at other community college.
And have we had a formal request yet on the proposed TERS?
Yes, we have. Believe it came into Dr. Eskamia's office.
Yeah, so we're, we've been waiting for this process to kind of follow because we suspect that there's going to be more beyond this eventually over time. We don't, we have no idea of what, what type or what it might be specifically, but we recognize that the best practice was to be, to have this policy in place. We've been approached, I've, we've met now with the, with the City of Corpus Christi, we've shown them, we've demonstrated to them also our expectations on how their requests can be modified and changed and, and more conducive to our, to our, to our policies, and so we're exchanging those, those bits of information right now.
I agree that a policy is needed, and I'm glad that we chose to take that step first. Do you have, though, in your mind, a timeframe by which we may be able to take some action one way or the other and get them a decision?
Without rushing and making omissions or anything like that, my best timeframe is February.
Okay.
I mean, that's my best-case scenario.
Okay.
Because that gives us the, the right amount of time to do our due diligence and so forth. We may need a little bit more time, I don't, I don't know that. And I'm saying that with the idea, the caveat that we're, we don't have a scheduled January meeting.
And do you know, or have you had discussions with the city? Is that timeframe, does that work for them in their efforts, or have you had that discussion with them?
So I know people want it yesterday and everything else. That being said, I told them this is, this is the most reasonable thing, and that was without discussing with you all as Regents.
Right.
At that point, and I said, everything depends on them, on, on the Board of Regents, and we will move at that speed. They understand where we are.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am, I had that discussion Friday.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments? So the board has an opportunity to adopt this today and give staff something to, to move forward on. If there's changes that you'd like to make, please let us know, and we could adopt it at a, at a subsequent meeting, but if there's no changes desired, then the board would entertain a motion to adopt this draft policy, B, what is our number again?
B4.37.
B4.37. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Mr. Rubus makes a motion.
And I'll second.
And Dr. Sherwood, second. Any other questions or discussion from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, please say no. That motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, staff, for your work on this. I know it's been, again, the back and forth between your research and the, the law firm has been, I think it's been very, very helpful to us for, to have a comprehensive policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next discussion is related to the draft policy on public comment that was reviewed at our last board meeting. I did not hear any changes from, from any board members, and we didn't have any discussion as a result of that. You have sent a courtesy copy to the different councils, et cetera. Dr. Eskamia, and have, have you received any feedback? Have you received any feedback?
Not on this particular one.
Okay.
No.
Hold on, let me, let me just make sure I'm checking that correctly. Any feedback, Tammy?
No.
Beth, did you get any feedback? We didn't get anything at Faculty Council or anything like that, no, so.
Are there any questions? Again, we reviewed this last month's meeting. Are there any questions or comments on our policy for public comment during the board meeting? If not, then the board would entertain a motion to adopt new policy B point two, B2.1.5. Is there a motion? Motion to adopt by Dr. Sherwood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Abert. Is there any public comment on this item?
My name is Jack Gordon, I live at 4118 Bray, and I've brought this subject up many, many times here. Why? And ask yourself why you don't have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Like I keep telling you people, people don't know when the meeting's going to be over. They know when the meeting's going to start, and every other government in the city that has public comment has it at the beginning of the meeting. And why does Delmar have to be different than everybody else? It, it's a good indication to me and everybody else that you don't want to hear from the public, because the public, if they know when the meeting starts, they can be here, but they don't know when the meeting will be over. So it's an indication that you don't care. If you cared, you would have it at the beginning of the meeting, if you wasn't afraid to hear from the public.
Mr. Gordy, this new public, policy for public comment during board meeting moves public comment to immediately following recognitions at the start of the meeting.
At the beginning of the meeting is much, much better.
Well, immediately following our, our recognitions. So thank you for your comment, Mr. Gordy. Is there any other public comment?
Actually, it does say at the beginning of the board meeting, so.
Thank you.
Item seven.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comment, all those in favor of the adoption of this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, please say no. That motion carries. Next item would be discussion and possible action related to the appointment of a representative to the Nuasis County Appraisal District. You all, included in your packet was a letter from Mr. Armando Chapa, who is our current representative on the appraisal district board, expressing his desire to be reappointed. We can accept that with a, with a, excuse me, a nomination for his appointment, or if there is another nomination from the board, please let me know, your pleasure.
I would move to reappoint Armando Chapa, Adam Chair.
Are there any other nominations for appointment to the appraisal district board? Is there a second to the nomination of Mr. Chapa? Mr. Salinas makes that second. Any comments or questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Armando Chapa to represent Delmar College on the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, please say no. That motion carries. The last item on our agenda is going to, will hold until after our closed session. So at this point in time, we will have general public comment. If there is anyone who would like to address the public in...
My name is James Klein, I live 3501 Montana Street here in Corpus Christi. I'm a professor of history here at Delmar College, and I'm also the president of the Texas Conference of the American Association of University Professors, and speaking to you today in that capacity. I want to express some concerns that our conference has about some actions taken at Delmar College in the last month, a little over a month, the last six weeks, I guess, here at Delmar College concerning Dr. Daryl Sansing. On October 9th, Dr. Sansing was met outside his classroom by several members of the Delmar Administration and two armed Corpus Christi police officers, and escorted off campus immediately. Pending an investigation into student complaints against him, a disciplinary hearing on this matter was held last Friday on November 8th. A concern that our Texas Conference has regarding this is the use of armed police officers to immediately escort him from campus. We cannot see this as warranted unless Dr. Sansing represented a real and present danger to the college. No one from the administration conveyed this to him on that day, and no evidence has since been produced to support this. Dr. Sansing remains a taxpayer and contributing to Delmar College through his property taxes, and has such as every right to enter the college grounds. We then are left to assume that the use of armed police officers on October 9th was meant to intimidate not only Dr. Sansing, but other Delmar College faculty, staff, and students. Such behavior is unprofessional, and those responsible for it should be disciplined properly. A second concern that we have pertains to the disciplinary hearing on November 8th, presided over by members of the administration as well. Dr. Sansing was asked, Dr. Sansing had asked that this hearing be open to the public in accordance with Delmar College Policy B6.39.3.3. At the opening of the hearing, the presiding officer announced that this proceeding would be closed to the public, when Dr. Sansing's attorney noted that he had requested an open hearing. The presiding officer responded that he had issued his ruling on the matter. Dr. Sansing had designated myself and another individual to serve as representatives of the local chapter of the AAUP. Nonetheless, the presiding officer ordered us to leave the room before the hearing began, seemingly in violation of Delmar College B6.39.3.3. We ask that you as a board discuss this matter with, with members of the college administration and ask them to address the concerns expressed here today. Should you require clarification on this, you can reach me here on campus or my off-campus address, and I can provide that for you, should you wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Jack Gordy?
Yes, again, this is Jack Gordon, I live at 4118 Bray Drive. All of you should have got a letter in the mail about what they paid a lawyer in Austin to look at the contracts for Southside Campus. Now, there's nobody here and nowhere else can tell me that there ain't somebody here in Corpus Christi that can look at the contracts, but they paid that lawyer in Austin $22,950 to sit at a desk and look at the papers. And I know good and well, and all of you should, if you got any common sense, that there's people in Corpus Christi that can look at those contracts, but to pay somebody $519 an hour to sit at a desk and look at some papers? That, to me, just like the paper you got that was passed out, that's a waste of money. $22,950 to look at the contracts. I thought we had a lawyer here at, at Delmar College, but evidently, we don't. And, and the one you got there, that article about the waste Southside Campus, that was in the Delmar Foghorn. So they believe in telling the truth, because Del, the Southside Campus is going to be a waste of $500 million, taxpayers' money. We don't need it. We got 12,000 empty seats at Delmar College now, and like I keep telling you people, the... enrollment, the attendance at Delmar College has not went up, not one student since 1992. So why do we need the campus? Why? Ask yourself that same question. Why?
Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Hi, I'm Sean Flanagan, live at 4218 Herndon Street. I'm here to talk on your proposed use of your draft that was introduced in the October meeting of B3-16 as the foundational item for a year-long budget, or not budget, but policy and procedure study. And, you know, policy and procedure, this is pretty boring, you know, most, it's like, ah, why would I listen to that? But what got my attention was a statement that was made in the last meeting in October, when one of the board members asked the administration member who was presenting this proposal, the question was, what happens when the administration doesn't follow its own policy? The answer to that question floored me. It was that the administration is not legally bound by these procedures or policies. I'm thinking like, wow, what happened to due process, equal treatment under the law, the constitutional stuff? Okay, and then I read the proposed deal here. As a result of reading that, I sent you all an email. Now, I presume most of you haven't read it, but one administrative member must have read it, because that person talked to me about this and said this whole policy was just about emergency procedures when the campus is closed in a hurricane. I have read this four times. That's not what this is about. This is a huge transfer of authority. If you take the time to read the previous policy and what this draft is changing, you see that you are giving the president the power to rescind any motion, any proposal that the board makes. You are exempting the president by giving him exclusionary powers in emergency or temporary so that he or his administration does not need to follow any of the policies or procedures. I'm not asking you to not vote against it, I'm asking you to consider it, to read it carefully. If you're like me, you look at it, policies and procedures, why should I read that? That's boring. It's not. Read the original policy that got taken part, and then read the changes. This is a huge transfer of authority from the board to the administration. Now, if you want to do it, fine, but read it and vote on this particular draft before making it a foundational paper for what you're going forward. It's in plain English, it's not hard to read, it's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. I don't see anyone else for general public comment, so at this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending or contemplated legal matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. Also, Texas Government Code 551.087 regarding discussion deliberation of information received from a business prospect with which the college is conducting economic development negotiations and/or the deliberation of an offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect with discussion and action in open session. And under Texas Government Code 551.072 regarding the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 3:53 PM. We'll take about a five-minute recess while we clear the room. The board has returned from closed session at 4:36 PM. We have one action item coming out of closed session. Mr. Rivas?
As chairman, upon the staff recommendation, I'd like to move for the approval of the engagement of outside legal counsel. Phipps, Deacon, Purnell, LLC, as requested by the Nuasis County Appraisal District in connection with certain property tax litigation pending in Nuasis County.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Abert. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. There is no other action coming out of closed session. We will now look at our calendar for the upcoming month. We have a scholarship reception tomorrow at 5:30 on the West Campus in the Dome. So please, plan to attend if at all possible. We will be recognizing one of our donors and a scholarship recipient in a little interview as we always do, but then thanking multiple scholarship donors who will be in attendance. This is an annual reception put on by our foundation. Board financial training on Thursday at 10:00 AM, coordinating board leadership conference next week in Austin, and then we have our regular board meeting day on December 10th. There is a Southside Celebration scheduled for December 2nd at 10:30, and a trustee leadership seminar put on by the Community College Association of Texas Trustees on December 6th, and then our season celebration and fall graduation on December 13th. If there's anything else needs to be added to the calendar, please let Delia know, and she'll make sure it's done so. Is there anything else for the good of the cause? Seeing not, we are adjourned at 4:38 PM.